Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting for August 24, 2021, being called to order at 6:18 PM. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council as well as Board and Commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged, though, to watch and participate from the safety of your homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed online, streaming online at glendaleca.gov, Government Public Meeting Portal, or on cable, Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during the Glendale City Council Meeting. Thank you, and with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian. Brotman.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here, thank you. What's next?
Next would be flag salute.
Thank you, if you will join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing until night is vacationed. President Abraham Lincoln once noted that the strongest bond of human sympathy outside of the family relation should be one uniting all people of all nations, tongues, and kindreds. We are blessed to live in a country where we enjoy the fruits of our labor and use our success to build up businesses, communities, and neighborhoods where we can all prosper. We pray and give thanks for all this, especially as we approach Labor Day, a holiday to celebrate the bonds between working people of all nations, tongues, and kindreds. We also pray for our men and women who serve in our nations, aren't forces to keep our country safe and protect our way of life. We pray that you keep them from harms reach and return them home safely to their families. We pray for this and peace tonight and always, amen.
Thank you, thank you, Aaron. And what's next?
Next would be the agenda for the August 24, 2021, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council, posted on August 17, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, Mr. Tuktalian.
Next would be presentation appointments. Would be agenda preview for the meeting, next meeting, the regular Housing Authority and the City Council meetings for August 31, 2021, and September 7, 2021 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, September 14, 2021.
Ah, okay, thank you. Next item?
Next item would be consent items that following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes, and next?
Next would be City Council and staff comments.
Okay, do we have council comments?
Yes.
I do have some.
Yeah, I just, we all got notification the other day of this, another horrific accident in Glendale. A young man driving southbound on Pacific at a high rate of speed was attempting to turn onto a stalker, he lost control, and he apparently sideswiped a car, collided with a bus bench, and two pedestrians, fortunately they were not seriously injured, and struck an apartment building. So again, you know, we're seeing this on a pretty regular basis. I know that our police department is doing the best they can with the resources they have, which are always going to be limited because we have to work within our budgets. But what I would like is if we could take a look at, at the level of resources that are going into traffic enforcement versus other activities to see if there's any way we can do more there. And then more broadly, I think it would be helpful for us to have a task force on traffic safety that we put, you know, some serious resources behind with a Vision Zero Plan, which I've raised before, but a Vision Zero goal, let's say, commitment from this council to reduce serious injuries and fatalities to zero. I don't think any other issue in Glendale rises to this level, or almost no other issue does. So if I could get a second, I would like staff to look into that and see what can be done.
Do I hear a second? I have a question about that is, Mr. Gulanyan, is this something that traffic and parking and transportation could look at, traffic, or is that not in their purview?
Yes, Mayor Devine, Mayor City Council, most definitely we can, as far as the Vision Zero policy that we have had conversations about in the past. I just want to acknowledge that this is a very important issue to me, to council, and to staff, quite frankly, the safety of our community and the members of our community is of utmost importance. By the same token, the Vision Zero policy document, as important as it is, it's also a monumental task and the scope of which will cross several departments. And as such, we have already started assembling a team from various departments that will be involved, from engineering, from enforcement, et cetera, to start working on drafting a policy for your consideration. We are hoping to bring an item forward to you in December of this year, seeking direction on the parameters that you'd like as council to see in such a policy document, and then start a very extensive outreach and the work that needs to be done perhaps over a number of study sessions with council and the community. That is our plan. We have had hotspots in the past that we have looked at individually. We will look at this intersection, but as Councilmember Brotman noted, this was the cause of a speeding vehicle. So we'll take a look at that intersection, we'll look at what else we can do to improve the conditions, but in my opinion, a wholesale, comprehensive policy in place with recommendations will go a long way in implementing council's direction for the safety of our community.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? If there are no others, I would just like to...
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Yes, I just...
Councilmember Kasakian.
I know you'll mention the fire department promotion ceremony, but I'd just like to congratulate all of the individuals that were recognized and received their badges and were accepted into the ranks of the organization. I attended that, and I know you did as well, and it was very well attended, and it was an honor to be there to witness that. I also want to congratulate the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry, which had their 21st, I believe, gala, it was, it was, because of COVID, they weren't able to have one last year, but they had one just this past weekend, and I want to congratulate all the honorees as well as Dr. Frieda Jordan, who's done amazing work connecting individuals who need bone marrow transplants with acceptable volunteer donors. So I'd like to thank and congratulate that organization and organizers for a successful event, thank you.
Thank you, and I, I'm so sorry that I had to, I had to miss that, that event because there were a lot of good friends of mine that attend, and it's a tremendously worthy cause, and they do such wonderful work in saving lives. What I do want to mention, speaking of saving lives, is that tomorrow night, from 6 to 9 in front of the Glendale Galleria, is the 11th Armenian-American Medical Association Health Fair. And please, you know, they have been at this for 11 years, this is their 11th, they do a fantastic job, you can get all sorts of testing done, they will also have vaccination center there so that if you want to get your vaccine, you can do it, just stop by, you don't need appointments, we're encouraging everybody to do that, it's available, you can have dinner, shop, and get a vaccine. But please, I'm sure that a lot of us will be there tomorrow night, it's going to be huge, and you know, the impressive thing about this is nothing will stop them, because they've always had indoors at the auditorium or at the Pacific Community Center, and this year because of the indoor restrictions, they're having it outdoors, so congratulations to Dr. Sepian, and all of those thousands of people that contribute to this health fair every year, and you are indeed saving lives. Okay, and with that, what's next, please?
Community announcement, three-minute portion. Madam Mayor, I do have the three callers on the line.
Thank you, let's hear them.
Tony Passarella, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm surprised you didn't mention anything, Mayor Devine, about the FDA approval of a COVID shot, so I'm very surprised about that, but I knew you had mentioned the pop-up clinic, and your response when I asked you why you keep pushing this vaccine last week was you want to save lives, well, in fact, the opposite is happening. Anyway, if anybody's thinking about going to the pop-up clinic, let me give you a little public service announcement, and I don't think many will, because the people that are holding out done a lot of research and they decided not to get the vaccine. Anyway, CDC is...
We pray and give thanks for all this, all this especially as we approach Labor Day, a holiday to celebrate the bonds between working people of all nations, tongues, and kindreds. We also pray for our men and women who serve in our nation's armed forces to keep our country safe and protect our way of life. We pray that you keep them from harms reach and return them home safely to their families. We pray, we pray for this and peace tonight and always amen.
Thank you, thank you, Arm. And what's next?
Next would be the agenda for the August 24th, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on August 17th, 2021 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, Mr. Tuktalian?
Next would be presentation appointments would be agenda preview for the meeting, uh, next meeting, the regular housing authority and the city council meetings for August 31st, 2021 and September 7th, 2021 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, September 14th, 2021.
Ah, okay, thank you. Next item?
Next item would consent items that following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. And next?
Next would be city council and staff comments.
Okay, do we have council comments?
Yes.
I do have something.
For Brotman?
Yeah, I just, um, we all got notification the other day of this, another horrific accident in Glendale. Um, a young man driving southbound on Pacific at a high rate of speed, uh, was attempting to turn onto stalker, he lost control and he, um, apparently sideswiped a car, collided with a bus bench and two pedestrians, fortunately they were not seriously injured, uh, and struck an apartment building. Um, so again, you know, we're seeing this, uh, on a pretty regular basis. I know that, um, our police department is doing, uh, the best they can with the resources they have, uh, which are always going to be limited because we have to work within our budgets. Um, but what I would like is, um, if we could take a look at, um, at the level of resources that are going into traffic enforcement versus other i- other activities to see if there's any way we can, uh, do more there. Um, and then more broadly, um, I think it would be helpful for us to have a task force on traffic safety that we put, um, you know, some serious, uh, resources behind with a vision zero plan, which I've raised before, but a vision zero, uh, goal, let's say, commitment from this council to reduce serious injuries and fatalities to zero. Um, I don't think any other issue in Glendale rises to this level or almost no other issue does. So, um, if, if I could get a second, I would like, uh, staff to look into that and see, uh, what, what can be done.
Um, do I hear a second? I, I have a question about that is, um, Mr. Galanian, is this something that, uh, tra- um, uh, traffic and, um, parking and transportation could look at, traffic? Or is that not in their purview?
Uh, yes, Mayor Devine, Mayor of City Council, uh, most definitely we can, uh, as far as the, uh, the vision zero policy that we have, uh, had conversations about in the past. Uh, I just want to acknowledge that, uh, this is a very important issue to me, to council and, and to staff, quite frankly, uh, the, the safety of our community and the members of our community is of utmost importance. By the same token, um, the, uh, the vision zero policy document, uh, as important as it is, it's also a monumental task and the scope of which will, uh, cross several departments. And, uh, as such, we have already started assembling a, a team from various departments that will be involved from engineering, from enforcement, uh, et cetera, to start working on, uh, drafting a policy for your consideration. We are hoping to bring an item forward to you, uh, in December of this year, uh, seeking direction on, on the parameters that you like as council to see in such, uh, policy document and then, uh, start a very extensive outreach and, uh, the work that needs to be done perhaps over, uh, over a number of study sessions with council and the community. That is our plan. Um, we, we have had, uh, hotspots in the past that we have looked at individually. Um, we will look at this intersection, but as, as, uh, council member Brotman noted, this was the cause of a speeding vehicle. Uh, so we'll take a look at that intersection, we'll, we'll look at what, what else we can do to, to improve the conditions. Uh, but in my opinion, a, uh, a wholesale, a comprehensive policy in place with recommendations will go a long way in, uh, in implementing council's, uh, direction for the safety of our community.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Um, if there are no others, I would just like to-
Madam Mayor.
I'll remon- yes?
Yes, uh, I just-
Councilmember Kasakian?
I know you'll mention the, uh, fire department promotion ceremony, but I'd just like to congratulate all of, um, the individuals that were recognized and received, uh, their badges, um, and were accepted into the ranks of the organization. Uh, I attended that and I know you did as well and it was very well attended. Um, and it was an honor to be there to witness that. I also want to congratulate the Armenian, uh, bone marrow, uh, donor registry, uh, which had their 21st, I believe Gala it was, it was the, because of COVID, they weren't able to have one last year, but they had one just this past weekend. And I want to congratulate all then honorees as well as Dr. Frieda Jordan, who's done amazing work connecting, uh, individuals who need bone marrow transplants with acceptable volunteer donors. So, uh, I'd like to thank and congratulate that organization and organizers for a successful event. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I, I'm so sorry that I had to, uh, I had to miss that, uh, that event because there were a lot of good friends of mine that attend and it's a tremendously worthy cause and they do such wonderful work in saving lives. Uh, what I do want to mention, speaking of saving lives, is that tomorrow night from six to nine in front of the Glendale Galleria is the 11th, uh, Armenian American Medical Association Health Fair. And, uh, please, uh, you know, they have been at this for 11 years, this is their 11th, uh, they do a fantastic job, uh, you, you can get all sorts of testing done, uh, they will also have, uh, vac- vaccination, um, center there so that if you want to get your vaccine, uh, you can do it, just stop by, you don't need appointments. Uh, we're encouraging everybody to, uh, to do that and it's available, uh, you can have dinner, shop and, and get a vaccine. Um, but please, uh, I'm sure that a lot of us will be there tomorrow night, um, uh, it's, it's going to be huge and you know, the impressive thing about this is nothing will stop them because they've always had it indoors at the auditorium or at the Pacific Community Center. This year because of the indoor, uh, restrictions, they're having it outdoors. So, uh, congratulations to, uh, to Dr. Zepian, uh, yeah, and, um, all of those thousands of people that contribute to this health fair every year and, and you are indeed saving lives. Okay, and with that, what's next, please?
Community event announcement, three minute portion. Uh, Madam Mayor, I do have the three callers on the line.
Thank you, let's hear them.
Tony Passarella, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Well, I'm surprised you didn't mention anything, uh, Mayor Devine, about the FDA, FDA approval of a COVID shot, so I'm very surprised about that, but I knew you had mentioned the pop-up clinic and your response when I asked you why you keep pushing this vaccine last week was you want to save lives, but well, in fact, uh, the opposite is happening. Anyway, uh, if anybody is thinking about going to the pop-up clinic, uh, let me get you a little public service announcement and I don't think many will because the people that are holding out, um, done a lot of research and they decided not to get the vaccine. Anyway, uh, CDC has, um, uh, okayed a lot of drugs in the past, uh, Quelus, a Schedule One drug, it's like heroin, everybody knows what's happened with heroin with people and LSV, uh, Darvocet, uh, responsible for two, 2,110 deaths between 1981 and 1999, but just a caution, if you want to go get this vaccine, that's FDA approved now, um, they've also approved Vioxx, FDA's own scientist, Dr. David Graham, uh, says Vioxx was associated with 10, 27,000 heart attacks or deaths. Well, fentanyl, 50 times more powerful than heroin, 19,005 deaths in 213, 4,200 deaths in 2014, let's move on, Oxycontin, uh, between fentanyl and Oxycontin, uh, from 1999 to 2017, 28,466 deaths. Put the picture up, please, um, Arm, if you would. Thalidomide caused babies to be born with fociomilia, uh, shortening of the, um, or abs- absence of limb. You, you're not going to put that up, Arm?
It's up.
Oh, I can't see here. Uh, anyway, uh, so now COVID-19, CDC, VAR's website, vaccine adverse events reporting system, over 13,000 deaths, 600,000 adverse, uh, event, Bell's palsy, paralysis, blood clot, now I've seen blood samples, uh, of blood clot in, in just about micro blood clots in just about everybody that takes this vaccine, stroke, myocarditis, 800, uh, events reported there of inflammation of the heart in young people, seizures, tremors, many, many, many more. So there it is, that, that's the FDA for you, so people, uh, Glendale citizens, if you're thinking about going and getting that back, uh, choose wisely, it's your choice, but, uh, I would recommend against it. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor? Uh, you're on mute.
Madam Mayor, can you hear us?
Yes, I said, Councilmember Brotman, go ahead.
Can hear you, yeah, um, I usually just try to keep my mouth shut, but I'm really getting sick and tired of, uh, hearing Mr. Passarella's, uh, vaccine misinformation. There is, uh, no evidence, no evidence at all suggesting that the vaccines have caused any deaths. Uh, and there is lots of evidence that not taking the vaccine is causing many deaths because we know that our hospitals are filling up and they're filling up with people that are unvaccinated. And this is also forcing hospitals to stop, uh, other types of surgeries that are also causing people to die potentially because, um, they are filled up with COVID patients. So, I, I'm just, I'm tired of it, um, these vaccines are safe and everybody should get one for their own sake and for the sake of their loved ones and the community as a whole.
Thank you, Ms. Brotman, next caller, please.
Ms. Devine?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Agajanian?
I also want to add, 97% of those who were visiting ICU at least a few days ago, 97% in ICU department are those who are not vaccinated. The 3% were those who were vaccinated and they were in ICU, just for information, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. Next caller.
Nari Ned, you got three minutes, Nari, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Dr. Zeravian, I'm a board certified dermatologist and parent at Shomlian Armenian School. I'm calling today in support of the school's COVID-19 protocol. I just want to say, we as a community are facing difficult times, but the children's wellbeing and need to maintain a safe school-going environment is paramount to getting through these times. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Doctor. Next caller.
Nari Ned, Kemi Chien?
Arm, I think your microphone is off, I can't hear you.
Nari Ned, Kemi Chien?
Thank you.
You have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff, my name is Dr. Nari Ned Kemi Chien and I'm a proud Shomlian Armenian School parent. Professionally, I'm the lead psychologist for Glendale Unified School District and have served our community and school for over 20 years. I'm a fierce advocate for both public and private school educators. It's my pleasure to have an opportunity this evening to address the town school on the Second Avenue exit closure that has caused significant frustration for the Shomlian staff and families. In question is the manner in which the Second Avenue exit was closed overnight based on an angry post on social media from a neighbor field with misinformation. We understand that this permit was temporary, but if it was going to be revoked, the school should have been given prior notification as the Second Avenue exit helps stagger the students drop off and pickup process to ensure health and safety compliance. It is after all what the Department of Public Health recommends. We've all seen how the coronavirus outbreak has caused major disruptions to our children's lives and they're feeling these changes deeply. With the opening of schools, we're finally seeing them take steps towards somewhat of a normal, healthy life. This is all thanks to our school administrators and teachers everywhere, including at Shomlian. They are truly our heroes. We see them firsthand, work tirelessly ensuring health and safety measures are fully in place throughout the school day and including during afternoon pickup, which naturally increases the amount of time it takes to go through the process. Having our kids in cohorts does not allow for the safe use of school buses. Putting a pause on after-school activities and athletics means more students are released in larger groups and therefore the line tends to be a little bit longer than usual. Just like we've seen across the city, ingress and egress procedures are more complicated anywhere we go. We acknowledge that this has caused frustrations among our neighbors and we wish it wasn't the case. We truly feel terrible, but similar pickup lines can be seen across the city at other schools. We all need to be patient and remember this is a temporary situation. Our kids now face new risks due to the rapid spread of the Delta variant. We're ready and willing to practice patience as we stay in longer pickup lines, knowing that these protocols are in place to save lives. We ask that you do the same. I urge the city council in the future to please conduct a thorough analysis of the situation and review all the precautions that are in place at Shomlian before making any further decisions regarding limiting our school's access to pickup and drop-off procedures. These are tough times for schools and administrators and we would greatly appreciate your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doctor. Next caller?
Peter Baudesan, you have three minutes, Peter, go ahead.
Hi, I, uh, wanted to say, uh, thank you as a Shomlian, uh, former parent, a, uh, current, uh, uncle of several kids who go to this school. I want to thank the, um, Glendale City, uh, police officers who are doing a fantastic job of assisting on Second Avenue and on Lowell, and I understand that they have a very tough job and, uh, they are doing an amazing job, uh, all over the city, especially with, uh, Shomlian Armenian School. And I, uh, I don't want to repeat what was just said by the previous caller, but I do want to thank the city for, um, paying attention to what's needed right now. But we all wish things would go back to normal and we could all go back to exactly what we did two years ago, but it unfortunately has not come to that point. So I really, really appreciate if the city considers, uh, in conjunction with the school and the neighbors, uh, solutions that are both helpful for, um, public health reasons and for traffic and for just being good neighbors. Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Tenney Harutunian, you have three minutes, go ahead, Doctor.
Thank you, uh, thank you, dear city council members. My name is Dr. Tenney Harutunian and I am a current Shomlian parent. I'm also a physician who's been working in the urgent care during the pandemic. I'm thrilled to have our children back in school, COVID has been especially difficult for them. However, my experience also brings a different outlook. I'm very conscientious of the fact that the threat of COVID-19 is very much still here. The start of the school year has come at what happens to be the most dangerous time in the pandemic. With viral loads that are thousand times greater and greater transmissibility, the Delta variant has become a predominant strain. Each one case of Delta results in eight new cases, resulting in the exponential growth of the virus in our community. It has capacity to evade vaccine protection, resulting in breakthrough cases. Unvaccinated adults are getting sicker and ending up on vents faster than they did before. And above all, above all, children this time around are actually getting sick, they are being hospitalized and they are the drivers of disinfection. And yet despite all these facts, many schools have reopened with less distancing, less layers of protection and less staggering. This is an uncalculated approach which has led to the filling up of ICU accostations and the lurking threat of locking down once again. But this is where Shomlian Armenian School deserves a lot of praise for its responsible approach during this pandemic. Our school's robust plan continues to mandate masking, enforce the social distancing, and most importantly, it has continued the cohorting of classes in order to quickly identify, contact trace any potential COVID-19 cases and exposures. The entrance gate on Second Avenue has facilitated this task. By being open for only sixth through eighth graders, it has separated them from the kindergarten through fifth grade classes, maintaining cohorts. It has minimized crowding, it has maximized social distancing. And one of the few parents who's actually used Second Avenue for my child's drop-off. While there was a lot of expected excitement on the first day of school, starting on the second day, the process was well monitored and it was incredibly smooth. Today, I'm reaching out to you as a parent of a vulnerable child, but also the physician of this community who does not want to re-experience the desperation of school hospitalized views as a virus spike. I ask you to please consider continued access through Second Avenue and help our school as a trust to responsibly minimize the risk of COVID-19 and our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have another caller?
Madam Mayor, those are the five callers.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, next item?
Next item is, uh, eight action items, eight, a community development regarding introduction of an ordinance to revoke and reinstate Title V of the Glendale Municipal Code to update business regulations and business licenses, Procedures One ordinance revoking Title V of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 regarding business licenses and regulations and introducing a proposed Title V in its place as well as amending Title 15 to relocate contractors' licenses, Resolution Two, uh, two would be resolution amending the, and adding various Title V fines and fees in conjunction with the revocation and reinstatement of Title V of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Redjami, and I would, uh, just, uh, I wanted to do this before we got to action items, but, um, I would like to pull, um, Action Item 8D and, uh, just the first part of that, um, action item, uh, the, um, that would be the one concerning conflict of interest, use of campaign funds and disclosure requirements, and I think I need, um, approval from another council member to pull that and bring it back on September 21st.
Sure, I'll second.
All approved.
As long as, as long as there's consensus, so it's just for the record, 8D1, we will not be discussing, we'll just be discussing 8D2.
Sure.
Correct, correct. Okay, in case there were callers, I'm waiting to, uh, call in on that one. Okay, let's proceed with 8A. Ms. Galanian?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of City Council, I'm just going to invite David Leitenberg, our Assistant City Attorney, to present this item for your consideration.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, we've been working on amendments, review and, um, fixing Title V for a nearly two-year process right now, we're excited to bring it here to you tonight. Um, when we began this project, we were set, we were set up with two major project goals in looking at Title V. Um, one is to improve customer service, to streamline processes, to make this easy for businesses to come in and get the business licenses, the various licenses that they need. The second is Title V has collected a lot of different provisions over the years and we were tasked with cleaning those things up that needed to be cleaned up. One of the major ways that we set about doing that is, um, is based on the idea of a master application. Currently, CDD does use a master application in order to get the main information that they need for business licenses, but one of the efforts that we made is to put the BRC, the, the Business Registration Certificate, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, at the center of this master application procedure. So people would come in to apply for their BRC and the information included in that would then be subsidized by additional, uh, supplemental applications, by additional operating requirements and application information. But with that BRC at the center, we hope to make this a one-stop shop for people coming in, for people needing to get possibly multiple licenses that would include the BRC. That should make everything moves, move quicker, streamline easier. One, another of the central things that we changed was we found that there was a lot that varied license to license as far as underlying procedures. Um, and one of the things that tied that together was these licenses all had various penalties for non-compliance. We had fines and interest for late renewals, um, issues like that. There were a lot of extra steps that created extra hassle. That third bullet on the left, um, points out that in some cases, people would need to come in for an application fee, followed by a permit fee, followed by a license fee, and the same process repeated year after year after year. It was a lot of steps for businesses to get through, it was not entirely business-friendly. So, a significant part of the proposed update is to, is to uniform, uniformize all of those licenses into a single proposed process, that every license will have only its application fee and that they won't have to come in for multiple steps every time. In addition, we're recommending that instead of fines and interest for late renewals, that we incentivize timely renewal by a discount and abbreviated application process on timely renewals. Um, you'll notice in the fee resolution attached to this report that a, a number of the proposed fees are exactly that, those are renewal fees, those are all based on what is currently, uh, 75% of the baseline application fees. Having that, having that 75% is an estimate of the reduced staff time it would take to process renewals and, um, hopefully the reduced abbreviated procedure in order to make those renewals move forward. Another of the items that we found varied from license to license was an appeal process. What we've done now is we've put a, a uniform appeal process in the front of this code. You'll notice in your packets that the code is, the proposed code is front-loaded with its first three sections proposed, 5.04, 5.08, and 5.12, which are all general provisions aimed at applying to all of the different subsequent licenses. One of those processes is the appeal process, um, which like I mentioned, had been sort of all over the place across the board. What we're proposing is that all CDD licenses include a uniform appeal to the Director of CDD. They will include another layer of appeal after that decision, following, uh, Municipal Code Section 2.88, which is the Uniform Appeal Procedure, that is an appeal to the City Council. Non-CDD licenses would go straight from denial, suspension, revocation to the Uniform Appeal Procedure. And again, while this varied between licenses, these procedures are more or less the average of what was already included. We, we aim to not change as much as possible and therefore this reflects that. This is a list of licenses that are currently in the code that we are proposing to have removed by this process. These licenses listed here, for the most part, are those licenses that did not ask for any additional information in their applications, therefore there wasn't additional information that the city needed in order to perform some process or have that. And they didn't include additional operating requirements, meaning that there wasn't, there weren't any business particulars that the city was looking to regulate by virtue of these licenses. In fact, they operated basically as a tax. On these particular businesses, people would come in, say, I run this business, they would pay the fee, they would receive the license, no other questions asked. They would pay the fee, they would receive the license, no other questions asked. Um, because of the lack of additional information needed by the city, desired by the city, and because of the fact that this, that we are pushing to have a BRC-forward process going on here, a lot of these were determined to be unnecessary, really redundant to the BRC, where somebody just by virtue of operating a business comes in to get a BRC. Therefore, we're asking that these all be removed by the revisions that we've made. I would like to direct your attention to the lower right of this slide. Um, the last three on here are not exactly in that same situation. Contractors licenses, you'll note from the title of this and from the report, is simply being moved to Title 15. Um, it didn't fit the gist of the rest of the code, but it is still necessary for operation and is being moved. Fortune-telling and similar practices has been an illegal provision that we have carried on the books for quite a while. It is being removed because it's illegal. Um, carry-out bags, the city was at the forefront of this issue, um, put this issue in the books and soon enough, the state followed suit. The city's code is at this point redundant to the states and this is determined to be unnecessary at this time. Therefore, we're asking that it be removed. There are two new licenses being put into chapters of this code, but in fact, that's a bit of a misnomer. Um, both of these existed in their entirety already, or exist in their entirety already. They are just being collected from a number of disparate provisions found in different locations and put into their own chapter. Once again, this is an effort at streamlining, it's an effort at being business-friendly so that people know exactly where to go to find their rules, their provisions, and, um, so that everything flows. Like I've mentioned, during this process, we aimed at fixing procedure. We aimed to not have significant substantive changes. But going through the process, a small number of substantive changes were made, as noted in your report, and I wanted to pay quick attention to them here. In the left column, we have CDD licenses. Um, previously, there were two styles of bingo license, one for a single event and one for an annual license. We're just streamlining the procedure. The only bingo license proposed is an annual license. Um, Christmas tree and pumpkin sales lots were formerly overseen by fire. Um, that has been asked for a transfer to CDD and a number of additional application requirements were requested. These were all at the request of fire and they're basically safety issues like additional detailed maps of the location, where fire extinguishers will be located, et cetera. Adult Business Licenses combines two different sections that were previous, that are currently in the code and the authority for issuing these has been, is being requested to be transferred from City Manager's Office to CDD. On the right side, we have non-CDD licenses. In fact, these are both City Manager issued licenses. Um, the first one is titled Temporary Place of Amusement. That currently sits, uh, in the code and is entitled Circuses, Rodeos, Fairs, and Other Temporary Amusements. Um, looking through that chapter, reviewing that chapter, we found that it was definitely, definitionally confusing. It was hard to apply. It was sometimes difficult to determine whether something fell into that chapter or didn't. And so one of the things we did was clean up some of the definitions in there, change the title to refer to temporary places of amusement and define what a temporary place of amusement is by something that has a 45-day maximum runtime. Now, there are provisions for that to go over if it does need to, but that's basically the guideline criteria here, which is a bit of a change. Previously, this also had the potential for referral to the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission. That was in situations where the City Manager's Office may have believed that this would benefit from a public hearing before issuance. Um, it was recommended that that process has been unnecessary, has not been used in a lot of time and could be removed at this time. The Commercial Special Events Permit is another one that is used regularly, um, but has what has been, come to be seen as a bit of a loophole. A number of commercial special events, commercial special events currently only applies to those things that are held on public property. But there are obviously a number of events that occur on public, that occur on private property, but have significant effects on public property. And that has been, um, a bit of a difficulty in, in organizing, difficulty in enforcing. Um, so a minor change has been made that the Commercial Special Events Permit will apply to events that have substantial effects on traffic or parking in the city. So now this can apply a little bit more broadly to those things that we wanted to have a little bit more control over. Um, one of the major procedural changes in this was the introduction of what is now going to be called the Entertainment Business License. Um, the Entertainment Business License is going to subsume what were formerly six different licenses. Those are listed on the right side of this slide. You'll see that you can probably imagine a business coming in and needing three of these current licenses. Needing an arcade machine tag, a billiard room tag, a live entertainment tag, a public dance tag. That would currently have been four different licenses that they would come in and get. What we're proposing is that a business in that situation would come in for an Entertainment Business License. They would pay a basic Entertainment Business License fee. On top of that, depending on what tags, what types of businesses they are hoping to get licensed, they would fill out the supplemental application, they would pay the supplemental fee for the appropriate tag or tags, and they would be licensed for all those in a one-stop-shop sort of situation. One of the benefits of this situation is not only that it is streamlined, but that by adding tag on top of tag, they're actually getting a discounted price as compared to what would currently have been four licenses. Each one will have been, will have been a savings on what would formerly have been four licenses. Now will streamline the process, but also give a better value for businesses coming in for multiple tags. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one more thing I wanted to mention in regard to the Entertainment Business License. Um, you'll notice in the fee resolution attached, I had mentioned that we were adding, um, renewal fees to the fee resolution. One of the other major things in the fee resolution is the various tags and costs in order to implement the Entertainment Business License. And finally, as far as fiscal impacts, licenses in general are intended to be fee-neutral. And so we're not expecting a substantial change in revenue for the city. You'll notice in Exhibit Four to the report that there is a significant breakdown of all the specific impacts. I should note that Exhibit Four was created, uh, across a period of three years and we took sample years from pre-pandemic, hoping to give you a picture of when businesses fully running, what that would look like. Um, what it breaks down to is there are about three of these licenses that are being removed that have some fiscal impact. That's the laundry self-service, auto park license and peddler permits. Um, comes to about $33,000 that, since we're asking for those licenses to be removed, those fees would not be brought in. But at the same time, we would be saving the staff time that would be used to issue those licenses and we're expecting the same staff to be working on the implementation of these new procedures as well as on the, the Business Registration Certificates as those are put in the forefront of, of this process. Um, that's all I have and I would be happy to take any questions. I also have some CDD staff here that can answer some of the specifics. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, thank you for that report. I was on mute. Um, do we have any questions or comments from staff?
Yes.
I'm, I mean, from council?
Yes, I, Mayor, if I can ask a question.
Councilmember Kasakian, go ahead.
So I'm glad that a lot of these things are going to be streamlined. Um, I do really appreciate the entertainment, um, catch-all permit. Um, hopefully this is successful and I think it will be. Uh, one of the things that, um, I have a question about is what is the, I guess, logic behind? And I had this, I struggled with this when this used to be in the City Clerk's Department, it was, um, issued by there. The separation of live music and, uh, public dancing and making it two different permits has always seemed somewhat redundant to me. And there was a time before everyone rolls their eyes, there was a time when there were investigators that would go out from the city and I see at least a couple of people nodding their heads to see if someone was playing music and as soon as someone got up and danced, it was almost like being in Elmore City, Oklahoma. A loose reference for everyone and saying that you're not allowed to dance. Um, why not, I mean, so if someone starts tapping the toe, we're gonna, uh, say that they don't have the proper tag. Why not just make it a live enter, live music and dance permit? Or tag?
Well, the main reason that that's not changed and addressed at this point is because we aim to change as little as possible. However, um, in regard to dance, as we, um, as we slim down the processes to fit them into a tag under the Entertainment Business License, a lot of the specifics in regard to dance have been slimmed down as well. Now, I, I can't tell you off the top of my head exactly how the interplay between the two is expected to play out, but the impetus for keeping the two was because there are businesses that definitely do one. There are businesses that definitely do the other and we weren't willing, or the direction was that we weren't willing to make that change at this time. Obviously, that's something we could look further at, but currently, we aim to not make substantive changes.
Sure, I, I would encourage staff to revisit that because it does seem like a simple cleanup issue. It's not going to require you to go throughout the code and hunt and peck and find all references. I think it's very simple. I understand that there's, you know, establishments that don't have live music, but will have dancing because they have DJ or they have some sort of, uh, PA system, uh, loudspeaker system. But I, I think, I think we can clean that up, that would be great. In terms of the sale from motor vehicles, the food trucks, I think that's a fine change as well, but I would also encourage staff to come back and look at that. We certainly, you know, when the city was, when all of, I think the entire country went to sort of through the food truck revolution, we, uh, halted active enforcement of a lot of our, um, regulations regarding food trucks uh, so as to not be the one city that kind of dampens that trend. Uh, however, that has led to some individuals taking advantage of that. I know that, for instance, up in, uh, the Montreux Shopping Park, there's issues with a food truck that, um, a vendor that is selling something right next to, uh, or not very far from a brick and mortar establishment that pays taxes, pays their dues to the shopping park. So in terms of, I, I would like to see us, um, I would like to have staff look into that and I hope one of my colleagues would second that and it doesn't have to be a report, it can be a memo, just figuring out what we need to do to put some parameters so the food trucks can do their business, the brick and mortars can do their business and there isn't a conflict between the two. And those are generally my, my thoughts. Thank you, Councilmember Agajanian, I seconded it and I guess Councilmember Brotman as well. Um, and the rest of it is fine. I, I just, I'm curious, what exactly is a poultry show? Which was in 5.08110, I have to, I have to ask. Anyone? What is a poultry show? My mind is going in all sorts of different places and I'd like some clarity.
Chickens.
Obviously, or parakeets.
You know, half of it.
Probably the reason for the cleanup because nobody remembers what it was originally intended for.
All right, livestock show, I'm assuming maybe in the horse overlay zone, someone parades a bovine around, but the poultry show I was curious about. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Okay, I just want to say that, uh, any, I want to know, I have a question. How many staff members worked on this? Because this is a lot of work that you've done.
That was myself and Arminé Hunanian.
Wow, and it took you how long?
About two years.
Wow, fantastic, fantastic. Anytime I hear more efficient, business-friendly, I'm, I'm on board and I, I love the idea of incentivizing, uh, by discount, discounting, uh, renewable fees that come in early. I think that's, that's a great idea. Um, okay, so we'll take a, um, a motion to, uh, for.
Madam Mayor, so we have the ordinance for introduction at, uh, I apologize, A1, and then we need a motion for the resolution.
I'll be happy to introduce it.
Okay.
Look.
Thank you. And then the resolution, I'll need a motion?
I will move that item.
Two?
I'll second the resolution.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. What's next, please?
Next, we have A B Community Development regarding consideration of updating sign regulations pertaining to animated digital signs. One, motion to note and file report. Two, motion to initiate code amendment to Chapter 30 dot 33 of the Glendale Municipal Code to allow animated signs with specific sign criteria.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of City Council, this, uh, item is presented to you this evening in response to Councilmember Kasakian's request, as it was read into the record, uh, regarding animated or digital signs, commonly known as digital signs, and how they're regulated, uh, by our zoning codes and to evaluate potential code amendments, uh, that could permit, uh, such signs in certain zones and with certain limitations. With that, I'm going to ask Kirsten Asp, our principal planner, to, uh, present this item to you. Yvette Nukian, our Senior Assistant City, um, Attorney, is also going to, I believe, uh, make part of the presentation or will be available to respond to questions.
Thank you.
Kirsten?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Galanian, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, this item before you, um, as mentioned, um, is, uh, to gather more information about animated or more commonly known as digital signs and evaluate any potential amendments to the sign code. Just generally speaking, the intent of sign regulations, um, is to preserve and protect property values, create an attractive business climate, enhance and protect the physical appearance of the community, preserve scenic and natural, uh, the natural beauty of areas, as well as reduce, uh, any obstructions or hazards related to signage. Currently, our zoning rules prohibit, uh, animated signs. And animated signs, um, are by definition, anything that gives, uh, gives a message through a sequence of progressive changes of parts by either action or motion, flashing or color changes. And this includes all forms of signage, including digital, electronic, LED, uh, and whether that is static, flashing, or colorful. Uh, there are a few exceptions, uh, outlined in the code. Um, the first is, uh, considered public service signs. These are things commonly, uh, like time and temperature, uh, signs that are digital, barber poles, um, or gas station price signs. Um, additionally, we have two other processes, creative signs and ASOZ, which stands for Advertising Signage Overlay Zones, which I will cover next. Uh, creative signs, um, are, are allowed, uh, but they're focused in the DSP zone and the CR zones only. So that is downtown and the, the three blocks along Honolulu and the Montreux Shopping Park. Creative signs are considered through a design review process that encourages highly innovative sculptural signs, expressive of art and entertainment that are otherwise prohibited and that further the goal of making a positive visual contribution to the property zone or overall image of the city while mitigating the impacts of large or unusually designed signs.
Um, Ms. Asp, may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Now, this, this would, uh, include the Neon Museum, correct? Because that's considered art.
I believe that the Museum of Neon Art signs were done by variance. They were not done by creative sign.
Oh, okay.
That transitions perfectly to the examples, um, on this slide. Um, examples of creative signs, uh, approved in Glendale have been the Lemley Theater sign, uh, King Taco, uh, the Harrison, and the only digital creative sign to date that has been approved has been for the former Five Star Cinemas along Artsoc.
Um, sorry, what about the Bevmo sign?
Uh, the Bevmo sign, I believe, was, uh, was done by variance and I think that was the impetus to create the creative sign process. Uh, the next, um, the next exception The next exception to animated signs is under consideration of our ASOZ, our Advertising Signage Overlay Zone. The ASOZ area is located and limited to the Galleria and the Americana districts of the DSP, because these areas have the most concentration of retail, restaurant, and theater uses. This overlay zone allows non-accessory signs, which is a little different elsewhere. Non-accessory means advertisement that's unrelated to the primary use of the premises, as well as animated signs. The intent of the overlay zone is to promote economic development, ensure an attractive business climate for the commercial heart of the downtown area, and is similar to other regional centers that typically allow such signs, such as The Grove and LA Live. The examples of the ASOZ signs is the digital sign above, on the bridge above Central that connects the Galleria, as well as some of the signs on the exterior of the Americana on Central Avenue in Colorado. As for other cities, staff consulted with neighboring cities to learn about their approaches to animated signs, and found that their regulations and their processes were very similar, very similar to Glendale's. None of the other cities allowed animated or digital signs outside of any specific districts or creative considerations. Culver City, Pasadena, West Hollywood, allowed very similar to Glendale, time and temperature signs. A master sign program or other creative sign processes was used to consider deviations. Similar to Santa Monica, similar to Glendale's ASOZ, that they prohibit all animated signs except for at schools and for traffic safety. And the city of LA allows digital signs also similar to Glendale's ASOZs, but their sign code is currently being reorganized, and it's going to actually further limit digital signs at this point to districts and to establish illumination and digital message standards. And West Hollywood, just, you know, kind of think of the Sunset Strip and how animated signs are prolific there, they use a completely different set of policies for those billboard and large wall signs. Outside of those policies, animated signs are prohibited. So, for some potential options, council can continue to prohibit animated signs with the exceptions that I noted previously, or can consider expanding the use of digital signs, subject to any limitations, restrictions of specific sign criteria designed to limit any negative impacts. The first option to consider is a citywide allowance. This would mean that animated signs would be eligible for all uses in all zones and all kinds of sign types. This option would result in the most visual clutter, and typical sign types are wall signs, ground signs, high-rise signs, marquee and projecting signs. This could also, this would also allow political and real estate signs to be animated, and those are commonly found in residential zones. Because this option would result, it would likely result in a proliferation of animated signs, staff would suggest also putting some content-neutral limits on things such as sign type, whether it's just wall signs, whether it's just ground signs, or combination area, so the size of a sign, location, illumination and brightness standards, colors, duration of the message, duration of messages, and hours of operation. The next, another option would be to consider limiting animated signs only to certain land uses regardless of zone. For example, consideration could be for only commercial-type businesses, like retail, office, and service uses. Alternatively, we could consider limiting to only charitable civic or nonprofit organizations. This option could result in animated signs in residential zones, but with this option, it would only dictate the who, who is allowed to have a digital sign, and not whether the sign is commercial or non-commercial. And so, the difficulty with this option is that to restrict by land use is, our land use tables, and you know, land use tables generally, not just Glendale, generally categorize uses of land by dividing up or distinguishing the intensity of the uses, meaning it places a value on the activities or the impacts of a particular use, and not necessarily on whether something is commercial in nature or nonprofit. And I'll use an example of a gym. A gym could be operated by, let's say, a 24-hour fitness, something that is considered, you know, sort of traditionally a commercial activity. But you could also have an organization such as the YMCA, which is generally considered a nonprofit organization, that could also run a gym, and they could run a gym, whether that's for collecting money or not. There's no distinction between the two. The gym is the activity. So, the land use option would not necessarily tell us if it's commercial or non-commercial, and therefore, staff would recommend against using this option because it would be difficult to tailor digital signs by these kinds of characteristics. And the last option to consider would be using specific zones to include or exclude where animated signs could be allowed. Clear candidates would be commercial and mixed-use zones. This would therefore prohibit animated signs in more sensitive residential zones. Further, if we focus down and eliminate some of our smaller and specialty commercial zones, such as the C1 zone, which is a neighborhood-serving commercial, neighborhood-serving commercial nodes, like Kenneth Village and Adam Square, as well as the CA, which is a commercial auto zone along South Brand, CH, Commercial Hillside along Hillside, as well as our special purpose districts, our Commercial Equestrian Zone, Cemetery Zone, our Medical Service Zone, and our Special Recreation, which are typically outdoor area zones. This would focus animated signs to the C2, C3, and DSP districts throughout the city. And for purposes of this discussion, I do just want to point out, we did not consider the industrial, or the industrial mixed-use zones, which are primarily located along the San Fernando Road corridor. So even if we focus to the C2, C3, and DSP zones, these areas are located primarily along our corridors, adjacent to single-family and multifamily neighborhoods. However, even with these limits, these zones cover a healthy portion of the city. A zoning map indicating where these zones are was included as an exhibit to this report, and I do have those images later in the PowerPoint if discussion warrants. Now, regardless of the options just presented, the city does have the ability to regulate animated signs with a number of standards to address nuisance concerns like light trespass and glare. You could put limits to the brightness of a sign, the lumen output, color, for instance, black and white only, or just green, or just yellow, the size of a sign, the number of signs, the placement, and the sign type, as I indicated, whether it's a wall sign, ground sign, high-rise sign, et cetera. Could also put some standards related to the display, meaning the minimum number of time, minimum amount of time the duration of a message may last, any fading or transition techniques, require sensors to adjust brightness displays between daytime and evening hours, limit the hours of operation, and even require illumination testing after installation. Some additional considerations for code enforcement, as well as a SEQA process, depending on any standards that are enacted, as well as the number and the locations allowed for animated signs, may make identification of violations difficult. And depending on the SEQA analysis of potential impacts, let's say if an EIR is required, it could add considerable length of time to any potential code changes. With that, council has the options and the alternatives to note and file this report, initiate any amendments with council direction to staff, and any other alternative not presented by staff. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Asp. Any comments, questions for my colleagues? Do we have any phone calls, Mr. Jimmyon?
Madam Mayor, there are no calls at this time.
Okay, so council, any comments?
Sure.
Okay, do we just want, go ahead. Did I hear?
Yes, if none of my colleagues have any comments, I'll jump in. So, in regards to, the reason I asked for this issue to be looked at by the council is because there was a request some time ago, actually, I think it was, may have been two councils ago, from a church here in Glendale that had wanted to change their, we'll call it old-school marquee, the one where you kind of stick the letters on a marquee and take it down, with a digital display, and they were told that it was not allowable under the law, which raised the question that just up the street from the church, there were digital signs, as we saw in the presentation, that were carve-outs in specific areas for specific reasons. I'm sure the council had their own reasoning for allowing at the time. And in addition to that, though, outside of that, we also have our own digital sign at the Glendale Civic Auditorium, and across the street on the corner of Mountain, and I believe it's Verdugo or Ceniata, you have the Glendale Community College with its own digital sign. In addition to that, you have a number of schools in Glendale that have their own digital signs, including Glendale High School, my alma mater, and Jefferson, which I noticed during the first day of drop-off. And it begs the question as to how are all these signs allowable? And besides that, there are a number of stores and businesses that unwittingly have digital signs. If you have one of those signs that says "open," where the lights turn on and off as it goes around, that is considered an animated sign. A lot of businesses, and by the way, this is one of the questions I had for me, Kirsten, is this related to outdoor signs or just indoor signs? What if someone has a digital menu display, or had a flat-screen menu display?
Mr. Kasakian, if it's inside the store, that's not visible from the outside, you know...
But if it's up against the window?
If it's up against the window, if it's an LED sign, it would be prohibited.
Okay. So, the reason I brought this up is because obviously, times have changed, things have changed, technology has changed, and I recall growing up in the city when the big issue was the giant illuminated cube for the TV station off the 5 freeway, I don't want to name names, that was very controversial off the 5 freeway. And, you know, that was causing issues with how bright it was. Well, that sign, I think, went away and it was dealt with, but the levels of illumination have changed, the quality of these signs have changed. In fact, you can drive down the freeway and you'll see a billboard. You won't even realize it's a digital billboard until it flashes and the image on it changes, day or night. And I think that we ought to keep up with times, and I think at least in certain areas, especially in our commercial areas, we ought to set standards and hold people accountable to them, but at least allow people to have signs that will comply and not be outside of what our current regulations are on the books. And that is why I brought this forward. I would propose that we, if I had my absolute way of, I think reasonable solution to this, it would be to allow digital signs with, obviously, restrictions on how bright the signs are and all the other considerations that staff would recommend in the C2, C3, and DSP zones, and I think it only makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Anyone else? No one else? Wow.
I mean, I'll say a word. I had no idea about, you know, these issues that Councilmember Kasakian brought up, so I'm glad he did, and it's good to hear kind of the nuance. I know in the briefings, it sounded to me like it's very hard to use a scalpel here, that if we make a change, it's going to cause a lot of changes that we may not necessarily want. You know, in general, I'm, I mean, I introduced a request that we look at a dark-skY ordinance, so obviously, I don't want more light and visual clutter. So, you know, I'm not keen on opening the door to something that's going to be, that's going to really change the look and feel of Glendale, but I understand, you know, with like an individual church, I don't know, if there's any way we can make specific carve-outs for those types of situations, the city attorney tells me that's very difficult to do. So, it's kind of my thought on it.
Ms. Devine?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Ms. Devine?
Councilmember Agajian, go ahead.
Okay. First, I want to make it clear, I guess GCC and Glendale Unified School District, they don't get permission from us. I guess they are their own government, and they can do on their property whatever they want. Am I right?
They are exempt from the city zone, yes, sir.
Okay. So, those are not the issue, I mean, that they can do whatever they want. But what I want to know, I don't know which way we're gonna go, but I don't want to see any sign which the top point is higher than 10 feet. I mean, it should be, sign should be such that it will, the building, the building which the sign is on, will cover the light, and so I wanted to see the sign to be highest top level of the sign to be 10 feet, not higher. The second thing is maybe restriction on time that it can be turned on, and later it should be turned off. In my opinion, the sign should go off from 11:00 to 7:00 a.m. I mean, 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., that illuminated big signs, or any kind of signs which gives some sort of messages, continuously the light changes, so to be limited in that period of time, and not to be there all night long, because obviously, when it's late night, so these lights, they travel a long distance because you don't see other lights, there are no cars, and become more nuisance for if there is any neighborhood which they are having problems with the lights. Those are the two issues that I would raise in case if we are going with the idea of letting these digital lights to be, or signs to be in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajian, Councilman Najarian, do you have anything to add?
I mean, just briefly, I was unaware of this, about this church, I guess, for the past two councils that are requesting this, so I'm not aware of it. I'm a little hesitant to permit, you know, a blanket usage of signs. Perhaps the variance is the way to go for this, as the Bevmo sign obtained and the Museum of Neon Art. But I would hate to see just, I mean, if you open the door, you're going to have a very bright city with content that we can't regulate. Of course, you know, a church is going to have appropriate content, but anyone else, you know, we can't dictate what their content is going to be, so I'm a little hesitant to go full in on this at this time.
Okay. And I'm with you, Councilmember Najarian. I did get an email about this Catholic school. Are the Catholic schools then not exempt from our ordinances?
It's not a Catholic school, although there may have been one from a Catholic school. I believe it's...
Oh, I did get one from a Catholic school, yes. Okay. Mr. Garcia, would that be a...
Subject of the day.
Are they exempt? No?
Madam Mayor, if it's a private school, they would be subject to local zoning laws, so they would be prohibited from having a sign.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that, I think each, as far as schools are concerned and signs, and we know that they taste, well, I think if we do them on a case-by-case basis and maybe look at a variance for them, but I'm not in favor of opening this can of worms either. I don't want to see clutter in our city. I think what we, our ordinance is working, and so I would not recommend any changes either. I don't know if, is there a motion?
So, is alternative, Madam Mayor, and my fellow council members, to then regulate and fine anyone who has a sign currently that is not in compliance with our city's ordinances? As the ones that I mentioned? ordinances, as the ones that I mentioned that are literally all over the city? I wish I'd had the time this weekend to go around taking photos and bring them and present to you a 120-slide PowerPoint presentation, but unfortunately, I was otherwise indisposed.
Well, Mr. and Ms. Casakian, let's ask our city attorney and perhaps Ms. Asp, how we handle enforcement? And if we were to open it up, it would be probably worse, but go ahead. Is there an answer to Councilmember Kasakian's question?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, as you're aware, with any enforcement issue, if we get a complaint regarding a sign or any other code violation, any violation of the code, then the inspectors will then visit the site and inspect to see whether or not it's compliant with the zoning regulations. And if it's not, it issues a warning and goes from there. So, you know, again, I'm not familiar with additional signs that are violation. I'm sure there are, we have a lot of violations that go unreported, but the enforcement policy wouldn't change if we get complaints, and we'll act on those.
And I don't know that just because people are violating it, we should open up and make it allowable. So, do we have a motion then on this item?
Well, Madam Mayor, I still have a couple of questions. If that is the case, and if I was to make a motion in the spirit of eliminating that clutter or that nuisance of animated signs in the city, is there a second to go around enforcing that in the interest of combating light pollution and violations of our code? Because that's what I'm essentially hearing from the other council members, that you don't want to change the law, and there are individuals who are in violation of the law right now that we have established as a city.
And I think what we can do this evening is just to make code enforcement aware of this, and that, you know, maybe they should do more enforcement.
Well, and that is not my intention, because the signs exist right now, and they're obviously not presenting enough of a nuisance for individuals to come and complain. We do have institutions, institutions that serve the public good, religious institutions. In your case, you received one letter from a Catholic school, a private school, and I don't understand why Councilmember Najarian says that he's not aware of the church issue, since we all received the same memorandum from the city attorney outlining that this issue has come up with previous councils about the St. Mary's Church on Central Avenue. And to sit here and act as though everyone is hearing this for the first time is a little troubling.
I haven't received, I did receive the memo. I never received contact from anyone from St. Mary's in the previous eight years.
Have you, did you receive the memo approximately two, three months ago from the city attorney regarding this issue that was sent to every single council person?
Well, what if I have?
Councilmember Kasakian.
You're saying that we had, this was an eight-year-old issue? I'm telling you, I haven't heard. Apparently, it was not that significant for them to contact council members before that. Maybe they contacted you, I don't dispute that, but I was not aware of it, or any other entity that wishes to have a digital sign. Except for the billboards, I know billboard companies have, about eight years ago, were very insistent on putting up billboards near the 134 freeway, but Northwest Glendale was very concerned, as well as the Riverside Rancho, about the light pollution. That's not the same issue, but that's the extent of digital board experience that I have had.
And the carve-out, of course, for the gallery and the Americana.
If you want to argue about it, that was an overlay zone in one of the most dense retail areas of the city.
Created by the council, and the request is by another entity, literally a block below that zone, making a similar request for a far less intrusive sign.
Would you please wait to be recognized, Councilmember Kasakian? Councilmember Najarian, were you finished?
Unless Mr. Kasakian has any more questions for me.
I would like to ask Mr. Kasakian, what is his intent? What would you like for us to do? What are you asking this council to do as far as this amendment is?
I think, my request is from council to offer or suggest to staff to amend our guidelines regarding animated signs to allow them in certain commercial areas, or to find ways to have, whether it's schools or churches, private schools, because if we're allowing public schools, and certainly, private schools should be allowed to have them, and churches that do provide public service announcements, just like if gas stations, by the way, are considered a public service for their digital signs, I can only, I can certainly make the argument that a church that would also serve to put announcements about COVID vaccines and everything else would fit into that category to be allowed to have digital signs. Within a certain parameter of brightness, illumination, and duration. I think it's a reasonable request.
Any comments from my colleagues?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I would suggest times change, things change, and I would suggest, as I said before, to have lower-level signs, electronic signs to have, because now is a very different time than years ago. Now, as I said before, like 10 feet high, not higher than 10 feet, the top level not to be higher than 10 feet. And then the staff can come up with the size of these signs, do not make very giant signs. But as I said, these days is very different than 40, 50 years ago, 30 years ago, maybe, to have that type of signs, smaller signs, not very high to bother the neighborhood, and to work on something which is acceptable to everyone, on my colleagues, with a reasonable size.
I would just like to, thank you, Councilmember Agujanian. I do agree with Councilmember Kasakian that if some schools are allowed or permitted to have signs, of course, these are schools that are not, that are not affected by our arts. But anyway, I would agree that if some schools can have them, then I think all schools should have them. So, I don't have an argument against that, or I wouldn't not approve that. I would support you on that one. The other one about the, you know, I just want to keep it, right now, where we are now with our ordinance, et cetera, except make an exception for the schools. I would be willing to do that. Would any of my fellow councilmembers?
Madam Mayor, may I? Madam Mayor, may I address that point? So, with respect to schools or any particular uses, as was outlined in the presentation, and we've discussed previously, there are some significant legal challenges with identifying specific uses that permitted to have a particular type of sign versus not, because then, really, what you have to do is then you have to kind of look at the sign to see what it is, whether it's average, you know, if it's, whether or not it's, the speech on it is related to the school or not, and the courts have frowned upon that. And so, there are challenges with that. If you want to provide us that direction, we'll certainly look at it, but we're telling you, I want to be, I want to be very upfront with you, there are some challenges with that that were identified in the report and become a problem. Again, the public schools, as you've noted, there isn't a whole lot we can do about that because they are not regulated by our zoning. And then, you know, again, it's a policy call whether or not you expand it to specific zones from a legal perspective, that is probably the most defensible. But then it creates the other, it creates the other issues, the externality issues, which I think you've identified. So, that's really the policy call for you. But it's, you know, from our perspective, from the lawyer's perspective, it's easier to allow it either citywide or in specific zones, as was suggested in the report, and less legally defensible to identify for specific uses. But then, obviously, the reverse is true in terms of the planning and land use impacts of doing that, recognizing that the land use impacts are greater the more you allow. And that's sort of the difficulty in this whole area. And I appreciate all the council members' concerns on that, both, you know, Councilmember Kasakian, who wants to, you know, allow it in commercial zones, and then other councilmembers who've spoken to the challenges of doing that. It is a very, it is a minefield, and that's all we wanted to make you aware of.
Well, again, we get back to the old adage, if it ain't broke, why fix it, right?
But it is broken.
Well, that's your perspective. Councilmember Brotman.
You're on mute, Mr. Brotman.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Mike, could you explain so that the Bevmo sign, or some of these that have been, I guess, given special, I forget what you called it, but anyway.
I think they're given variances.
Variances, that's the word. How did that come about? How are we able to do that with a Bevmo, and why couldn't we do the same thing with a church?
So, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Brotman, the variance process is intended for specific, unique cases where the property owner can establish that there's a hardship in complying with the standard with which they're seeking relief. So typically, the variance process is for unique properties or something unique about the property that makes it more challenging for them to comply with the standard. I'm not very, I'm not very familiar with the findings that were made on the Bevmo sign, so I couldn't speak to that. I do know that oftentimes, what happens in, from the planner's perspective, is when there are a number of, there's a particular type of use that becomes into favor but isn't allowed by the code, that you'll see more variance requests, and at some point, then the council, as a legislative body, is asked, do you want to make this an allowable activity? And that's what happened with the creative sign. Rather than do it by variance, the planning department at the time thought it was a good idea to have this particular, unique tool of the creative sign to do that, rather than doing it by variance. So, both the lawyers and the planners would tell you, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have a system where we're relying on the variance for a use that we want to see more of. It's really supposed to be unique. So, that's, you know, hope that answers the question, and maybe, I don't know if Ms. Asp has any familiarity with the variance findings on Bevmo or some of the others, but that's kind of how that came about.
Yeah, so, I mean, I understand, you know, there's, I understand what Councilmember Kasakian is saying about this kind of fundamental unfairness, and it seems, you know, things seem a bit haphazard the way they're arranged now, you know, but again, like, I'm really reluctant to open the door, you know, widely. Can we explore whether we might be able to accommodate some very specific cases, like, was it St. Mary's, or whatever it might be, a private school that, you know, wants a sign welcoming students back, or whatever, you know, whatever it might be? Can we explore that to try to, try to address Councilmember Kasakian's concerns?
We can, we can explore anything that the council would like. I just, I would just want to be upfront that the variance process is unique and is challenging, but I don't know if we've even been asked whether variance can be submitted for that property, and what the likelihood would be of the granting of that, but, you know, if that's a discussion the council would like us to have, we can do it. But again, that's not, you know, there are challenges with that. I don't know, I don't know, Kristin, if you have any thoughts on that?
I'm unaware of a variance request to date, but that is, you know, anybody could ask for a variance from any, any section of the zoning code.
If I?
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I just want to ask Councilmember Kasakian if that's an approach that would, that would satisfy him?
No, I don't think the variance approach is fair, because we can have literally two entities. One can be a public school, or in our case, the Civic Auditorium, that has a digital sign. By the way, not the type I believe I would advocate for. I would, again, like to control the brightness of it, the luminosity. Amazon has spent, you know, millions of dollars developing a Kindle called The Paper that has, is digital and looks like paper. Anyways, nevertheless, to have, to allow an equal application of the law regardless of what is in or out of our control, to have some conformity, whatever is allowed on those properties, to find ways to allow that. And can I ask for the zoning map of the city to brought up, to be brought up? I believe it was an attachment. Given where it's allowed right now, the digital sign, and I know that there's this constant refrain of this is in our busiest and business center district in downtown, which, by the way, is transforming and changing due to COVID, and we don't know what the next 10, 15 years of it would hold like. But if you scroll down to the bottom of the city, if you look down to where, and I think there's a section of this that has, yes, this area right here, which is specifically downtown, if you were to have it in the C3 area, which is a commercial service area, that is already a business district with businesses, that many of whom, and I would actually like to ask staff, has anyone done a survey to see how many businesses do have digital signs in that area currently, so we can bring them into compliance, including the open and closed signs that are animated?
I'm not aware of any violations of, for digital sign rules in these areas.
No violations have been reported, but we all live in the city, we all drive around in the city. I'll be driving home tonight, and I can take pictures of them and send them on MyGlendale app or whatever it is, but we don't know of how many are out of compliance currently.
I'm unaware of any, any code enforcement cases.
I think, I might, I think it would be reasonable for staff to explore what we can allow. And by the way, we put restrictions on everything, from accessory dwelling units to you name it, in this city. And to now sit here and nitpick over signs and think that we're somehow opening the floodgates for the downfall of Glendale is, I think, somewhat disingenuous on all our parts, when all we're asking is for the fair application of the law and for it to be simple and easy for entities to fall.
And with that being said, can we ask for, can I ask for a motion on this item? Anybody would like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that staff explore the application of digital signs with restrictions on luminosity and duration in the C3 zone within the city.
Well, then you would be, Mr. Garcia, would that be a B2, motion to initiate a code amendment to allow animated signs, or would just be a different, completely different motion, wouldn't it?
No, I believe it comes in within B2, and I think that's what Councilmember Kasakian is referring to, to initiate the amendment, have staff look at allowing animated signs within C3 with illumination restrictions and conditions. C3, C2 and C3, or just C3?
Just C3.
Okay.
And I would like, if Councilmember Kasakian will accept, then make a height limitation on illuminated sign.
How about the staff look at, look at restrictions, including that, and they'll come back with recommendations? Because any initiation has to be, you know, staff does the research, writes something up, goes to the planning commission, and comes back to council anyway, so.
I don't want to dictate the details, but I do generally agree that there should be some regulation of the heights, size, all of that would have to be regulated, but I would expect our staff to give us their recommendations.
And time of operation, if it's possible.
Sure. We'll look at all, all appropriate time, place, and manner regulations.
Okay, so that's your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be HC City Attorney regarding adoption of a Code of Conduct for the City Council and members of the city's boards and commissions, one introduction of ordinance amending title 2.83 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, two resolution adopting Code of Conduct for council members and members of boards and commissions.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, Member of City Council. I'm just going to turn it over to Mike Garcia, our city attorney, to present this item in response to Councilmember Kasakian's request.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, this is a follow-up to the June 15th discussion that the council had regarding a Code of Conduct for the council members and the members of the boards and commissions. At the conclusion of that discussion, the council directed me to prepare revisions to the proposed Code of Conduct that had been presented to you. We've done that. There are about seven, six changes from that draft, and I can go through them, they're identified in the report. One thing I would note, that the council had asked for the boards, members of the boards and commissions to take the AB 1234 training, and the direction on that point, it wasn't clear. So, what I put in the proposed motion, the proposed policy, was that the members of the boards and commissions take that training within six months of appointment, or six months from the adoption of the policy, whichever occurs first. So, obviously, existing commissioners will have to take it in six months, and then any new commissioners will have to take six months after being appointed. Unless the council wants a different policy, it can be every two years if you want. The council can provide further direction on that. The only other comment I'll make on the code of conduct, unless there's a specific request on the changes, was I was asked about on the policy regarding the consumption of alcoholic beverages while conducting city businesses, is how would that apply in the instance where council members or members of the boards and commissions are invited to social events, but you're invited in your official capacity? And then the same question regarding conferences. So I thought that was a good comment and to make a clarifying amendment to the code of conduct to subdivision D, which would provide that this provision shall not be interpreted to prohibit the consumption of alcoholic beverages by council member, commissioner, or board member and an event that is otherwise a social event, but where the council member, commissioner, or board member is invited in his or her official capacity, or to prohibit the consumption of alcoholic beverages at conferences where alcohol consumption is permitted as part of the consumption of meals or during other non-working activities, provided that city funds may not be used for alcoholic beverages. So I would propose that as an amendment in light of the question that I had. The second part of this item is there's an ordinance to, as I mentioned when we discussed this on June 15th, was to incorporate most of the provisions that were in the current municipal code provision of Chapter 2.83 into this new code of conduct, keeping some of the provisions of Chapter 2.83 related to the solicitation of funds for nonprofits, and then also addressing the acceptance of employment, accepting prohibition against future employment after coming off the council or commission. So those provisions will stay. Everything else will kind of, is already incorporated into this revised code of conduct. So, Madam Mayor, the two items are introduction of the ordinance and then adoption of a resolution adopting this policy. And I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Any questions or do I have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
No, I have some.
Okay, Councilmember Najarian, scores. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Garcia, it says that the commissioners and council shall not be under the influence, looking at the report here.
Correct.
Correct.
So, I mean, it sort of brings us back to the question of someone who's got an alcoholic beverage in their hand. This isn't open, by the way. And is perhaps taking sips. We don't know if that person is under the influence, but don't you think the mere act?
Yes.
Does the ordinance prohibit the act of consuming alcohol?
Yes, there's a provision that also prohibits the consumption of drugs or alcohol or tobacco or marijuana during any meeting and also while conducting any city business other than obviously any lawful uses during conferences and social events. So that is all covered by the proposed policy.
Okay, so, I mean, there's a lot of other bad things out there that can be done. And we haven't enumerated them. Are we on solid ground if someone does something unusually bad that we haven't listed, that that would be grounds for us to hold them against the ordinance?
Councilmember Najarian, so the code of conduct is, I would say it's not exhaustive. It is intended to provide certain, identify certain behaviors and actions and omissions that would constitute a violation of this code. I would note that the members of the boards and commissions serve at will and are removable by the council at will. And so that's always an action that the council can take, even if there's something that's not on, that's not specifically listed. You know, I guess we could come up with a little bit more, some language, some catch-all language.
We've been through that before. And I think council was clear that they wanted to see some set, some bright line tests that would be there to govern the behavior. So my, assuming that future councils, and let's look 10 years down the road, let's say they share that same view that unless it's listed specifically, we didn't give enough notice to the commissioner that such behavior is not appropriate. How can we deal with that? That's my question, I guess. And not be specific enough. You can't be, you know, you can't say, you can't do bad things while you're, you know, acting as a commissioner. Clearly, we need to be a little more specific. Is there any sort of guidelines or codes of conduct that are a little more exhaustive than the ones you've listed?
Councilmember Najarian, so there, as we noted in the, I think probably in the prior report, not only does the code of conduct have a set of rules of behavior by which the council and the members of the boards and commission are required to abide by, but there's also a set of ethical principles or ethical standards that are also required to abide by. So they're a little bit broader, you know, acting in the public interest, complying with both the spirit and the letter of the law and city policy, you know, respecting the process, you know, the wide variety. It's a broad policy. And again, the council, at the end of the day, there's some behavior that the council feels is inappropriate and beyond the pale. The council always has the right to remove members of the boards and commissions or if it's fellow council members, they can conduct, you know, censure proceedings if that's the role, sort of saying behave nicely. That's, it's a pretty broad policy and it gives the council a lot of tools to regulate behavior for yourselves and also for the members of the boards and commissions.
I appreciate that, you know, but there is an argument to be made that it's vague, you know, that some of it is vague and not specific enough. Anyway, I don't want to let the, how do they say? Let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I think, I think at this point, I'll take what we can get, if we can get it. So I would, I would introduce the ordinance, Madam.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. Yes, good.
Yeah, when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. In the past, I, serving on commissions, there was an issue of self-promotion. And I'm wondering, is that covered in the principle of ethics or the ethics principles? Or it's not actually covered in these? But anyone that's on a board or a commission or an elected official who uses their office to promote themselves, is that specified in our ethics? Because I know we had a problem with that previously. And it was very difficult to solve that problem.
Madam Mayor, so there are, you know, there are some, if by self-promotion you mean private, representing your own private interests, there is a provision of this, that a principle, ethical standard that requires that the council and the board and commission members are appearing on behalf of the city.
Section, anywhere, principle of ethics?
Let me see. There is, there are a number of rules regarding the behavior of, but that's something we can add if that's a feature, no self-promotion and no use of city. There is, obviously, there's a use of, there's a provision regarding that prohibits the use of city resources for personal or private gain. That's already included. So if you want something broader to say no self-promotion, we can add that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would be.
I would like to ask Mayor that that be, I would like to ask the mayor and council to have that narrowly defined. Because it does leave it very broad for anyone to accidentally, inadvertently list something somewhere, or someone else may list it that may be misconstrued or misinterpreted as such. I mean, certainly, I don't believe any council person, any one of us should be using the title in terms of advertising and whether it's in print or radio or TV saying, "I'm a council person." And I also, you know, I don't know, run a florist shop or whatever. I think that that is certainly inappropriate and does walk up to the line. But I think in terms of listing a title for identification purposes or listing a person as part of a person's resume, I think it's entirely appropriate.
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's hear it.
Mike Mohill, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, this is Mike Mohill. Good evening, council members. The conversation seems more like about the commissioner, how they behave themselves. How about the behavior of the council members? We've had council members in the past who stepped over the line when they were speaking with people in the viewing audience and at council. There should be some law about that, too. Why are you going to be passing laws about behavior of commissioners? Why don't you have some kind of law about yourself? I'd like to hear that conversation. Thank you. I think Mr. Najarian knows exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you.
And I must say, Mr. Mohill, that's what I am talking about. Council and all elected officials and commissioners and board members. This applies to all of us.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Najarian.
Well, I agree with, to your point, I agree with your point. If I had a floral shop and I mentioned every meeting that I've got the best florists and people come into my shop and buy flowers all the time, and my flower shop's on the corner of Colorado and Central, I think that's totally inappropriate. And I hope that we include something like that in there because that is self-promotion for personal gain using the city facilities. Putting it, putting something on your card, I don't, I don't think is wrong if you're just listing it as a historical item. But to say, "Because I've served on the GWP Commission for so long, I can be, I'm going to be your best electrician," or whatever, you know, have that sort of insinuation. So I think we, there is a line that we should draw and we should separate honest, historical, and experience items versus promotion and marketing for a personal business, whether you're a lawyer or you're a, you know, you're a planner or an architect or anything like that.
So if I may, Madam Mayor, members of council, what I'm hearing is some provision, and it would be in the Section 5, dealing with personal conduct, is that the council members and the board members and commission members shall avoid using their title, office, or resource of the city for personal gain or self-promotion or marketing?
Yeah, something like that.
Yes, that's good.
Okay.
Yes. That's great.
So I guess if there are no other changes, that we need just introduction of the ordinance and then adoption of the resolution with this change as well as the change regarding social events.
So we're listing that right now just as you read it?
No, I'll tweak it.
Okay, because, so my concern is what if I have my company website and on it, I list that I serve on the Glendale City Council and any of the other bodies that I've been assigned to serve on? What would that mean?
Yeah, I don't, from what I heard from...
That's historical, that's...
That's just a factual thing.
Historical or informational?
Both, one or the other. Yeah, and I think anybody who's in the, you know, you have a personal website for your business and you say, "Hey, these are some of the things I do in my extracurriculars, including serving on council." I think that's permissible. But to use, like, I think what Councilmember Najarian said, his example's a good one. You have a business, you're on TV, and you say, "Hey, I have the best business that does X, Y, or Z. This is what I do." I think that's what he's referring to.
And that's fine. That's right. Okay, so are you okay with that, Councilmember Kasakian?
Would you like to excluding, you know, use of name, title for identification purposes?
It all depends, right? I think it's walking, it's all about the intent and how something is expressed and said. And I don't know how much time or patience there is to go into it. You know, if someone says, you know, "I'm Cal Worthington and I used to be a council member from wherever he was," you know, "and come on down and buy cars," that's a little suspect to me, right?
Right.
On the other hand, if there is a website where there is the about the person and it says that in addition to owning this business since this many years, this person has also served on this council or has been a board member or a commission, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so would, maybe then, exception for use of the title for identification purposes?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Now, I didn't want to say anything, but now it goes, "I'm a TV host for 22 years." And if I over there say, "I'm a council member" or something, then somebody can come and say, "I shouldn't say it. I don't understand what's going on here now." It's so confusing.
From what I heard, the reverse is true. I think the concept would be perhaps not saying, when we're hearing council members, that you have a TV show. So that's, I think, that would be, using Councilmember Najarian's example, that would be, that would be how it would be applied. Not when you're out there telling people, "And I'm on the council and this is what I do." I think that'd be, because people know you're on the council and that's understood. And you can't separate yourself from them when you're out there. But I think it's not using the resource of the city for self-promotion or self-marketing. Is that correct, Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't want to say, "I'm an attorney and I know I'm very good at municipal law while I'm on the dais, while I'm on the dais. I'm very good at municipal law. So you folks out there, got a problem, come see me." Which is different than me saying, "In my practice, I sit on the Glendale City Council." There's a difference.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm saying is that when you're using that in your work and you're using it as a promotional, you know, "This is what I am," and, you know, I just think that's wrong and I've had experience with that. And it was not, it was not pretty. So I would just like to see verbiage in there that says that when you're on the job or when you have a card, a business card, it does not say, "I am on the city council." Because then right away, whoever you hand it to, if you're in, if you're working for a real estate agent, a developer, insurance company, and you say, "Here's my card," and you have commissioned, you know, so-and-so, it just should not matter. You're self-promoting. That's what that is. I think when you have a business card, it should be your business card and not your council or your board or your commission. Because then you are self-promoting. That is self-promoting.
So to that point, I have this card here. I've, I'm trying to cut down on the amount of waste and the amount of paper I have. This is a digital singular card that if someone asks me for my contact information, I can tap it to their phone and it pops up an information contact sheet, like a website, that has my city contact info on it, my private business contact information on it, my personal contact information on it. So would that be a violation of the business card rule since I'm using this as my business card now?
Pretty slick. That's technology that I...
Oh, don't get me started on changing because of technology tonight.
That's just giving your information.
Yeah, I think, I think if you're using it for, like I said, the intent...
Mr. Garcia, if you just kind of put some verbiage in there about self-promotion and...
Madam Mayor, we do have a caller on the line.
No, I want to listen to myself.
Madam Mayor, so what I would say is just we focus on the use of city resources or the office for personal gain or self-promotion or marketing. And in that example provided by Councilmember Kasakian would not fall when he's just intended to provide personal information.
That's fine. That's fine.
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller on the line.
Please, let's hear from the caller.
Francesca Smith, you're live. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Francesca Smith. I hear an echo on the phone, so it's a little hard to concentrate. I read this staff report in detail. I was curious about a few things. So I absolutely understand the proposed moratorium on volunteers even having the appearance, it seems, of drinking. What about a city councilman calling a voter and a citizen a cockroach from the dais? How is that okay? It's a rhetorical question. I'll let you all think about it. I've been shocked to see how Mike Mohill is treated by Councilmember Najarian. And when he was Mayor Najarian, I was shocked to see how he was treated. he was mayor Najarian, I was shocked to see how he was treated. We should all be treated equally. Uh, thank you very much, good night.
Thank you. Okay, so, thanks.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'm glad Ms. Smith called in, I'm glad she's taking, uh, taking, uh-
Notice of the-
Key to what we're talking about. Um, I did apologize to Mr. Mohill and I'll give him another apology when he takes the photo of my bare rear end off his newsletter.
And, and I-
He'll get another one.
I thought you treated him rather well when you were mayor and, and he was very good to you then, I thought, if I remember correctly. I don't know.
Mike and I are old friends, but you know how old friends butt heads sometimes.
Righto, righto. Okay, so we have this, um, uh, adoption, uh, an introduction of the ordinance, amending the code and a resolution adopting with changes, correct, Mr. Garcia?
That's correct.
Okay, so can I have an introduction of the ordinance, please?
Sure, sure, yes.
Councilman Kasakian introduced it.
Yes, seconded, Madam.
Okay, and I, we need a motion for the resolution adopting the code of conduct as, with these specific, uh, amendments.
The two changes regarding self-promotion and, uh, consumption of alcohol at social events and conferences.
I'll, I'll, um, move the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes, thank you. The next item would be D2.
Next item would be D2, City Attorney Regarding Campaign Finance Updates and Cleanup to Campaign Finance Ordinance and Proposed Matching Funds Program. Number two would be Motion Directing Staff Regarding Proposed Ordinance to Implement Public Financing of Municipal Election Campaigns and Matching Funds Program.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, uh, Mayor Devine, Member of the City Council, this item is well presented to you tonight in response to, uh, request from Councilmember Kasakian and I'm going to invite Doreen Martirusian, our Principal Assistant City Attorney, to present the item for your consideration.
I'm afraid he's on mute.
I'm sorry, as you noted, Madam Mayor, uh-
Someone's on mute.
You're on mute?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Mayor Devine, Member of the City Council, this item, uh, is also, uh, presented to you in response to Councilmember Kasakian's request and, uh, I'm going to, um, ask Doreen Martirusian, our Principal Assistant City Attorney, to present this item for your consideration and to reiterate what you had noted before, uh, item D1, ordinance for introduction, has been pulled from the agenda and will be presented, uh, at your council meeting on September 21st.
Thank you very much, good evening, Mayor Devine, council members. Um, as Mr. Galanian indicated, we are here, uh, to present a sample ordinance, um, it was attached as an exhibit, so it's here for discussion and further direction. Um, if council is so inclined to have staff come back, then we'll come back for, with an ordinance for introduction. Um, the ordinance is based on the direction that council gave us on July 13th when we discussed the matching funds program. Subsequent to that meeting, um, I have been in touch with my, um, contacts at the San Francisco Ethics Commission, at, at the city of Long Beach and, um, the LA Ethics Commission. Of particular help has been Mr. David Tristan, the Executive Director of the LA Ethics Commission. Um, a lot of back and forth, emails back and forth, um, phone calls, just brainstorming. And, um, basically, um, he concurred, um, that we should have, i- i- if the city was going to have such an ordinance, we should start simple and then we can add to it as, you know, election years go on and, and we learn that we need to implement new, um, processes. Um, so, based on the direction and my conversations, we are presenting, um, a very simple sample ordinance for council's consideration and direction. Um, basically, uh, the matching funds program would, um, uh, be for qualifying candidates. Um, what constitutes a qualifying candidate, uh, would have to be that they're officially on the ballot, they would have to raise contributions from Glendale residents for matching funds, the, they would have to limit their contributions to $50,000. That does not include the up to $10,000 in matching funds that they would be eligible for. They would also need to timely complete and submit all required forms. Um, the match would be a one-to-one ratio, basically $1 in matching funds for every dollar raised through city resident contributions.
Doreen, excuse me, before we go on, we're having some technical difficulties, it's being viewed differently, so we're gonna close this and, and bring it back up.
I was on slide three.
There you go, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ar. So the ratio in matching funds would be, uh, $1 for every, um, $1 of city matching funds for every dollar raised through city resident contributions. For example, if a candidate was able to raise $3,000 from city resident, uh, the candidate would receive $3,000 from, in matching funds and so forth, you know, $5,000 for $5,000, the cap would be 10. So if a candidate was to raise 12,000 in matching funds, he or she would only receive up to $10,000. Loans in kind and contributions, um, in, loans and in-kind contributions would not qualify as matchable contributions and neither would contributions which are received after the date of the election. The program requirements, um, the candidates would be required to file a W-9 with the city so that, um, they would be eligible for dispersments of funds, request for matching fund statement and agreement, um, they would have to submit copies of checks and/or credit card transactions for qualifying contributions, of course, it, we would redact or keep confidential all identifying information, and they would have to submit a completed form for each city resident contributor verifying that he or she is a city resident. So, the residents would go ahead and complete the form, sign it, um, under penalty of perjury to, to ensure that they do indeed live in the city. Um, we did, um, include some enforcement provisions, I know that was a, a concern for council last time we were here, um, the question was, well, how do we collect, um, funds that have been dispersed and the candidate hasn't, you know, uh, cooperated or, or, um, met all of the requirements? And when I discussed it with my contacts, unfortunately, the enforcement provisions are what we normally have in other, um, ordinances, we can, um, ask the candidates to voluntarily return the funds that they received. Um, other cities have been okay with that process, normally the candidate is contacted and they'll just go ahead and return the funds within a date certain. Um, if that doesn't happen, then, um, the city could pursue criminal penalties, criminal proceedings or civil enforcement.
So there hasn't been a, there hasn't been a challenge with any of these cities getting money back if they needed to?
No, there have been situations where the candidates have been requested to return the funds, but they haven't had to go down the criminal enforcement or the civil enforcement line. And with that, we are happy to hear your direction and answer any questions.
Very much for that, uh, brief report.
Thank you.
Change, thank you very much. Okay, let me hear from my colleagues, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, uh, who, is that, uh, I'm sorry, I can't see the-
Uh, Dan.
Yes, uh, Councilman Brotman, go ahead.
Yeah, I have two questions, so one of them is, um, the way this is set up, if I am a qualified candidate and I agree to limit my contributions to 50,000, um, then basically if I raise, let's say 10 people who live in Glendale give me $1,000 each, that's all I would have to do, I would get that match and I would have my, um, my 10,000, right?
Correct, yes.
Um, okay, so this, now, now this is probably more, this is more of a comment than a question, is, I, I think I would prefer, I'd like to hear what the others think, I would prefer that we could do something like, what if you said the first $20 of every contribution is matched five to one? Then, basically you need 100 people contributing at least $20 to you and then you get your 10,000, that would, I, it seems to me that would be more appropriate because, you know, somebody has to demonstrate they have, you know, broad base of, of, of support and, you know, they're doing the work, they're raising the money and then, and then the matching kicks in that way, just a thought, I just put that out for everybody else. I have one, one more, um, question though, on this idea of residence, every, every contributor would have to fill out some kind of a certification, couldn't we just rely on, on voter registration rolls?
Mayor Devine, Councilmember Brotman, council members, when, um, I was discussing or brainstorming with my contacts, they prefer to have their own forms, certification for the matching fund programs, so that they, they explained to me that it's cleaner, um, it's simpler, you're not going back and forth checking other forms and filings, um, that's how they're doing it, certainly we could look at other alternatives if, if that was council's direction.
So, so what I'm hearing is that-
It seems like a lot of, um, of paperwork, but again, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the trade-off is higher administrative cost for, burden for the city to, to verify voter registration versus replacing some of the burden on the, on the candidates and their, and their donors to provide the information, so it's wherever, wherever the council feels appropriate.
Well, um, I have, I have a question directed at that, um, don't, don't we usually have envelopes and when people give us donations, they have to fill everything out, their name, their address, how much they gave, so we have that information in hand, correct? Is that, or am I thinking-
If it's over $100, if it's over $100, you have to collect all the information already.
Right, right.
Correct, but if it's under 100, then you wouldn't, and then there's also, um, there's the 460s, again, I think it's just, um, this particular, it's, again, it's up to the council, but this, having it done the way it's being suggested here, modeling after some of the other cities, it makes it easier for the city staff to administer, there's more, there's more, a little bit more legwork that they'll have to do, uh, to, to ensure compliance.
Right, okay, are you, are, is that it, done, Mr. Brotman?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Devine.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Agajanian, I have to try to recognize your voices.
What, uh, now I was in favor of this, but now I look at, this is a major work for city attorney's office, I mean, to go after all this information and collecting for, isn't this big, uh, like work, or, uh, work to be done by city attorneys, attorney's office? Because this way we are, uh, my concern was more people to be able to participate in the election, I mean, to be a candidate, I mean, but the way it goes now, this would be a major undertaking.
There'll be some staff work associated with it, um, I'm not sure if it'll be our office, but there will be some staff work associated with the, yes, but that's, you know, like any regulatory program, or any, any program, uh, that you have, you're gonna have some staff work associated with it, so it's really up to the council whether-
Do we have any idea, how much work it's gonna be, let's say, it's 10 candidates, maybe, do we have an example, this? The way I was reading the, this, uh, the, the report, not this brief I'm looking at, it doesn't show, but to me it appeared that lots of things has to be done, I mean, by, I thought it has to be done by city attorney's office to go after the person if he collected or-
Well, again, we don't anticipate that'll be a huge issue, based on our conversations with some of, uh, the other cities that we, we, uh, looked at, and then on the administrative side, that was part of the reason for the, the particular forms, that mean whoever's, whoever's administering this, there should be less work, uh, for the city, uh, to have to verify, that's, that's the idea behind some of these, these forms that, that would be required.
Okay.
So, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian?
Uh, I, I support this, I'm a strong advocate of this because, uh, having run for city clerk and, uh, other offices before, including the council seat, I know how difficult and onerous the process can be for, uh, to get started, especially for people who may not be familiar with it, even for those of us who are familiar with it, who've run a few times, there's still always curveballs and other issues that come up with the changing of the laws and, uh, compliance, it could be, it could be a daunting, uh, task to take that first step to run, uh, for office to serve your community. And one of the frustrations I've had is the publication of a candidate's statement, which is a large expense, um, $2,500 now since the county has taken over, uh, these operations, and in addition to that, just generally getting a person's message out there and seeing how other cities are doing their part to encourage more people to participate and run, and this is not as much for the races that we're, we may run in, um, although it will impact, I believe, all of us if we, uh, at various times, uh, if we decide to move forward with this, but it's also what we're leaving behind, uh, in terms of our legacy for future generations to encourage others to take that first step towards public service. Um, I think that, uh, the suggestion that Councilmember Brotman brought up is a good one, I've made similar suggestion that some legwork has to be done in order to earn, um, that, uh, additional, uh, assistance, uh, from the city, now whether it's, uh, monetary or signatures, I don't want to make it straight, uh, monetary, which is why I had suggested that individuals get signatures, but if it's a small contribution of something, you know, to, to show that there's some viability or momentum, um, from the grassroots or from people who may not be able to write the maximum amount of checks, I'm fine with that, but I think that, you know, what we're asking and what we're suggesting and what my colleagues have supported in the past is a reasonable step forward and, um, I would be fine with whatever would get this ball over, um, the goal line to make sure that we can see this happen in our city. So I'm, I'm turning to you all to make suggestions to help tweak this and, uh, move it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Well, I'm still not sold on, on the idea, mainly because I look to our neighboring city of Los Angeles and it's incredibly filled with corruption in this public finance campaign, um, program that they have. Uh, ours is not exactly like theirs, but, uh, it's an, it's an incredible amount of verification that must be done, the number of donors, the amount of, uh, of each donation. Um, so, I mean, I, I would be, I would be willing to, to waive the, um, the initial filing fee and the ballot preparation fee of, what's that, 2,500 or whatever? I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure the matching funds alone are gonna get, I mean, so what's, what's the goal there, is to give someone a, a comparable, uh, opportunity versus an incumbent? I don't think, I don't think that's the way to do it, if that's what you're shooting for, you should put an absolute cap on, uh, campaign, uh, donations, uh, whether it's 50,000 or not, plus, um, you know, the IEs are, are a different animal, we can't deal with those, thanks to Citizens United, but, um, or limit the amount of money that someone can give to their own campaign, but I guess that's also prohibited, uh, you can't limit that. So I'm not sure how this is gonna help, in fact, it might even hurt, so if you're, if you take 10,000, i- i- if you take the matching funds, you're limited to 50,000 in, in your total overall, so that's sort of, you know, there's a, that's sort of like a double-edged sword there. Um, you might, you might say, gee, I don't wanna get over 50,000 because then I'm gonna have to pay back 10,000, because you never know when the donations are coming in and the contributions, it's, you know, nothing is certain in a campaign. Um, so I'm not sure what our real goal is, is to, is to facilitate, um, less, uh, well-off candidates from, uh, you know, to encourage them to become candidates or to, I'm, so I'm not sure what we're trying to do, I mean, someone explain to me what we're trying to do and, and it's, you know, last time we discussed this, I talked about some of the, the true barriers to, to holding office and they weren't in the campaign side, it was more in the, uh, in the, uh, council operational side, but, I mean, what are we trying to do? Someone-
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Well-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Agajanian?
I mean, I, I, I guess I was advocate to give $10,000, but, uh, I'm willing to make it that the initial expenses, to help with the initial expenses maybe, so everybody could come forward and be a candidate rather- Rather, now, the staff, City Attorney's Office, to be involved with this money, how they're going to use this money, or is it the real money that they collected? Or, I guess it will be, to me, it will be a difficult task. But I'm willing to, if it's agreeable to some, to make it to, you know, that initial expenses to be paid by the city. Or waive the fees and the cost of printing in the booklet as much as L.A. County will charge to help them to be able to be inside that book. I'm willing to modify it if there is, somebody will support it, I mean.
So, let me, let me just try to answer some questions.
Councilmember Kusakian, did you want to speak?
Yes, I do. I would like to answer some of the questions that Councilmembers Najarian and others have had. So the intent of this proposal is to remove barriers to entry to running for office. And Councilmember Najarian and I can discuss this and go back and forth as to what he believes are the barriers to entry. But money is a significant one. It is. And for anyone who doesn't think it is, just look at how much has been spent by successful and unsuccessful candidates in running for city council and for other seats in the city. Money should not be an impediment to running for office, and especially in trying to get your message out to your fellow citizens. It's $2,500 to get a ballot statement in English for every additional language. And in the past, when we ran our own elections and we sent out a sample ballot book with all the languages, for every additional language, there was a cost, which now will be 2,500, let's say, times four if you're doing Spanish and Korean and you want to do Tagalog. So if someone wants to reach voters in an effective way and just say, this is why I'm running, just like the sample ballot book that we've all received for this gubernatorial recall election, I think it is a fair, right thing to do, to allow voters to know who's running for office and why they're running for office. And that's where that $10,000 figure came from. But also, it's to allow individuals to spend that money as they choose for the campaign purpose that they feel. As we all know, on a campaign happens, depending on what the need is at the moment, as long as it agrees with the guidelines that we set forth. It could be for lawn signs. It could be for leaflets or flyers. It could be for a number of purposes that help strengthen our democratic process and allows people to engage and be involved in the elections. I don't know why we have this concern or this trepidation or fear. I mean, in terms of, we can try this, and if it doesn't work, we come back, we scrap it. But if it does work and we can see more people running for office, then we obviously have touched upon something, and I think it's a good thing and not something to fear.
Is that everyone? Councilmember Najarian again? Go ahead.
No, I mean, I understand that. Incumbents always want more people running for office. But, I mean, it's a, this could be a long philosophical discussion. But I don't, you know, I don't necessarily want to take up its time at this point.
Okay, well, if I, if I can be, I'll be the last one to speak. And if I will not be philosophical, I'm simply going to say as a taxpayer, I do not want my money going to another candidate or any candidate. I think that's the onus that's on the candidate, is to earn their money to get funding for their campaign. That's the way they, number one, learn about our community, meet people, learn about different areas, is by doing fundraising and getting out there and learning about our city. So that's my number one. Number two, you know, this is an opt-in program. So those people that are running for office, that can raise 250 or 150,000 dollars, they're not going to be involved in this. And they're going to, they're going to have more money than God for their campaign. And here are these people that are getting $10,000 or something, and they can only, and let's say they can raise, and then they have to pay back. So I'm against this whole idea, and that's all I'm going to say. I think the reason people don't run is because they don't want to run. I think the reason they don't run is because they don't want to do all the work. I think the other reason they don't run is because they don't have the time, they have a family, et cetera. It's not because of the funding. Because I think everybody knows that there is, there is funding out there if you have supporters, here, in other states, wherever, you can, it can be done. And it also can be done on $500. So there you have it. So I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion on this item, but those are my feelings.
I would like to put forth the motion that we do have experimental process of having a campaign contribution ordinance, ordinance for assistance that would give candidates who meet, and what is the criteria that we've outlined in this, Mr. Garcia? What, what would qualify according to, for someone to receive that 10,000? The signatures or do we want to...
Contributions from city residents, dollar-for-dollar, matching up to the 10,000 dollars.
Yeah, I, matching up to $10,000 experimental ordinance to see, for two election cycles, to see if it would spur more involvement and engagement. I think that's reasonable. And Madam Mayor, with all due respect, I have to disagree with your assessments as to what it takes. I know a number of times you've told folks what you believe is needed for someone to run for office successfully. And you're certainly right to a certain, to a point. There are also a lot of people who would like to run for office, who have ideas, who would like to serve up here and are financially burdened and can't loan themselves the money to run, like some others have in this city. And that's a fact. And so not everyone is of those means, and others would like to also serve. So I think we ought to open those doors and not make it an exclusive club. So that's my motion.
So were you suggesting...
I would...
Apologize, Councilman Brotman. Go ahead.
I was going to ask if that was a motion.
Yes, it is. A dollar-to-dollar match.
I would, I would second that. But can I, can I ask for a friendly amendment, which would be that we have some kind of mechanism where it could be the first $20, the first $50, something that would require a candidate to do a significant amount of fundraising before they receive those matching funds? If that's, if that can be, that item can be adjusted, then I, I second the motion.
Could you repeat that?
Would that be a friendly amendment, or how would we work that?
Could be, but I think we need a little bit more detail from Councilman Brotman on what he's thinking in terms of that. You mentioned earlier a five-to-one match, so the first $20 will be matched at five-to-one. Is that what you were suggesting?
Let's say the first 20, you know, the first $20 matched five-to-one. First $20 of every contribution matched five-to-one up to the $10,000 cap.
So if I donate $100, the first $20 gets the five-to-one match. And then, but I'm still capped at the $10,000 total contributions. That's what you're suggesting?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, that would be, I'll accept that. Sorry, I will accept that, as well as anyone who signs up to participate in this program is capped at $50,000 if they need to keep their expenditures at $50,000.
That's part of the ordinance, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Can I have subsequent motion?
That was only, that's the, so the draft ordinance is before you, but not for introduction. It was just so you could see what it looked like. And then now Councilman Kusakian has made a motion.
With accepting of...
With accepting Councilmember Brotman's friendly amendment. Did you want to have that sunset after the two elections? Or, because it'll be part of the code, or...
I would like us to review it, to look at it, but not necessarily sunset.
Because the council controls it by budget appropriation also. So that's a natural control you have.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I can't...
No, yes, you can.
Yeah.
Okay, my motion will be, if it's possible...
It's just an introduction of the ordinance.
No, it's not an introduction of the ordinance. We didn't, we didn't put it on for introduction because we knew there'd be some discussion that would probably have to bring it back, so...
Bring it back? How about if my motion, maybe somebody will second it?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
And I'm willing to listen to Councilmember Agajanian's suggestion to see if we can incorporate it.
I was suggesting, rather than to give 10,000, to give the amount of money which will cover the expenses, initial expenses, if there is seconded.
Is that a substitute motion?
Yes, substitute motion.
Does that replace the Kusakian motion, Mr. Garcia?
It does if it's seconded, but I would only, I would only, I'm not clear. The only thing I would say about that from the legal perspective is that that would require, that we, that would be difficult perhaps to enforce because we don't know what those initial expenses would be. We would have to, if that was the direction, we have to go back and figure out what kinds of initial expenses could be covered. And then we have to come back to council to say, okay, which of these do you want to cover? Because as Councilmember Kusakian noted, some of those are not our expenses. They're the county's expenses. Some of them are ours, which could theoretically be waived instead of us paying. So we would need, if that's the direction, we would need to come back to you a second time before bringing you the ordinance.
Okay, there is a second, you can do that?
If you, are you making that as a substitute motion?
Yes, yes.
Well, I'll, I'll second that, the payment of the initial filing and all that other stuff.
Okay, just so clear on that motion.
I'm sorry, I, so if Mr., if Councilmember Agajanian's motion is to waive initial filing fees, is that what we're talking about now?
Yes.
Waive or pay for, because some of those fees may be the county's fees. If you're just talking about, it could be filing fees, which is one fee, but there are other fees, such as the other fees that Councilman Kusakian raised, for example, the ballot statement fees. We would have to go back and get some more information on that, is what those might cost, and then come back to you with that information.
It's going to be between 25 to 2900 dollars on, which depending.
Per language, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it could be more, it could be less, it always depends.
No, but it will be less than 10,000, much less than 10,000.
Or just over.
Do you think they second on that one?
I think Councilmember Najarian seconded it.
Councilmember Najarian, okay, roll call, please.
Can I ask a clarifying question before we vote? Does that, so that, if that motion passes, then Councilmember Kusakian, then basically that's all we're doing, is these, maybe the filing fees and the, and that, whatever, the candidate's statement fee. We're not doing the rest. Is that right?
That's correct. Although council can give us direction on both, to bring both back. And then you can consider it when we have that additional information. That's another way to go about it.
Okay.
Because we're not actually taking any action other than providing us direction. So if council wants to see what those filing fees are before weighing to do it that way versus the 10,000, you can do that.
I think staff has enough direction from the consensus of the council to bring back both to see which, you know, up to four languages, up to the required languages that we've translated to, to see which is which. And then at that time, we can decide which we think is a better path forward, whether it's covering the cost of all the publication of the languages for candidates to run for office versus giving someone $10,000 matching after they've demonstrated viability of being able to raise money and collect signatures from residents to qualify for the experimental program.
Let me ask Councilmember Agajanian, as the maker of the substitute motion, are you okay with us bringing both back? Will the council consider it?
I'm okay.
Okay, now, if we can get a motion on that, then we'll bring both items back. Councilman, Mayor Devine?
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, before we, oh, I see, no, they're oral communications calls. I have four callers for the next item. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. We'll take, was there a second? Councilmember Najarian, you seconded that motion?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
No. Next item?
Next item would be oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager will refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I do see four callers for this item.
Okay, great. Let's hear them.
Saro Chichimian, you have five minutes. Go ahead. Saro?
Oh, hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Saro Michian. I'm a board-certified transplant hematologist and been serving the community for the past couple of decades. I'm a proud Shomlyan Armenian school parent. And as you've heard earlier, I'm calling tonight in strong support of the Shomlyan Armenian Schools COVID-19 protocol, specifically as it pertains to the pickup and drop-off situation on the Second Avenue. I think we all witnessed the detrimental effect that last year had on our children when they were out of the classroom and school environment. And it was such great excitement that we welcomed them, welcomed them back on campus for in-person instruction. I can see the difference in my children. With that said, I'm sure it is also clear to all of us that we are still in the midst of a horrible pandemic. And therefore, the safety and well-being of our children and youth remains at the forefront of every parent and school administrator. I don't think that anyone will argue that we are certainly living during very challenging times. And it is my hope that all of us understand that sometimes inconvenient adjustments really need to be made for the greater good, especially if it involves our children and youth. Thank you for your time and consideration with regards to this important matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Saro. Thank you. Next?
Talar Tijirian, you have five minutes. Talar, go ahead.
Thank you, and I thank you for taking our phone calls about this. And I apologize for missing the window of opportunity earlier. My name is Dr. Talar Tijirian, and I would like to echo the sentiment that was said previously. I am also the parent of two Shomlyan, two current Shomlyan students that are less than 12 years old and Shomlyan graduate. I myself am a proud alumnus of Shomlyan and Glendale High School. I am also a board-certified general surgeon, a published clinical researcher, and a clinical educator. First, I'd like to say that the school has done a superb job managing education and the students during this pandemic. They have done a great job during virtual learning. They're doing an even better job during in-person learning. We all know the negative effect of virtual learning on our children, and I'm very excited that they're back in school. But right now, more than ever, I'm very concerned about the health of all of the children at the school because the Delta variant is definitely putting them at greater risk than it was before. The, giving the opportunity to the school and the principal to maximize the physical distancing of the students is really important. And being a parent there and seeing the pickup and drop-off situation, having the Second Avenue gate as another opportunity to keep the children physically apart, I think is a very important matter to keep the children as healthy as possible. We all know that life is not back to normal, not even close. In fact, it's a little bit scarier now than it was previously for our children. And we would like to maximize anything that we can to keep them healthy and to keep them in school as long as possible. We appreciate the sacrifices of everyone during this time. We know that it's inconvenient in general to live next to a school, and we appreciate everything that the community is doing. We all want to work together to see this pandemic end, and we hope to keep our children safe. I hope that we are able to keep that Second Avenue gate open and to maximize the chances of not having any kind of COVID outbreak in the school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller?
Gayana Peziskian?
Hi, good evening. I'm a mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Gayana, and I'm a resident of Glendale and live near Shomlyan, where I'm a parent of three children who attend the school. I'm also an instructor at Glendale Community College, I'm also an instructor at Glendale Community College, where I teach healthcare. We have all experienced extraordinary times since March 2020. The impact in education has been tremendous. I have experienced it as an instructor and a parent. My students are older, but let me tell you, they have suffered from the complete shock that their educational setting has taken, just like our younger students. Shomlyan has done so much to provide social and emotional support for our children. Having children return to school has been the greatest gift to these children. When I say return, I want to emphasize safely return. We cannot go back to normal pre-2020. Everything we do as a community has to be done safely. Everything we do as a community has to be done safely. For us to have some form of normalcy requires for schools to be in session in person. With CDC guidelines and recommendations from doctors, maintaining safe physical distancing cohorts and masks are imperative for this to happen. Shomlian has gone above and beyond to coordinate all of this. As we experience newer variants, we must work as a community, support each other, be patient and be kind. Using Second Street for drop-off and pickup makes it possible for us to continue to have normalcy. Masks are not ideal, having no buses are not ideal. Trust me, we want the buses, but it's just not possible. At this time, using Second Street also alleviates traffic on Lowell. Buses are not possible because it will break the covert system, causing more class closures. Living near three schools myself in La Cressena, I experience the traffic. It is not ideal and no one likes it. I urge us to be united and supportive as a community of one another during these unprecedented and trying times. This is why I strongly support the Shomlian COVID protocols. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller?
Elisa Kalfayan, you have five minutes. Elisa?
Thank you. Hello, good evening, Mayor Devine and City Council members, this is Elise Kalfayan. I'm a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. Just before this meeting, I attended an online rally organized by supporters of the Burbank Green New Deal. The Burbank Sustainability Commission and Grassroots Group have been calling on their city council to agendize a Green New Deal package. Speakers emphasized that we can't wait for action at the federal or state level and that progress on major issues usually starts at the local level. A few of them also mentioned that we should think of this in some respects as a competition with neighboring cities like Glendale. Others talked about the IPCC climate report and said, people recognize that this is a code-red emergency, but politicians and political bodies still don't act like it. We need to quickly transition away from fossil fuels as our main source of energy. Here in Glendale, we should minimize or eliminate greenhouse gas emissions from our municipal utilities. The proposal just released by Glendale Water and Power is really disappointing as it recommends a major investment in new or refurbished gas burning equipment, basically the same proposal they put forth two years ago and the same proposal the city council reacted to by asking them to develop additional clean energy options. The alternative GWP is recommending is inconsistent with the city's goal of achieving 100% clean energy by 2035, with the race to zero commitment that Glendale, Glendale has just made and with the climate mayor's commitment to uphold the Paris Climate Agreement goal. The city should prioritize the maximum possible clean energy generation and investment. Until all clean energy and distributed energy options have been thoroughly explored, Glendale should not commit to a major investment in gas burning equipment. Our neighbors in Glendale talked about being leaders on climate issues. We don't have to frame this as being about leaders and followers or about being in a competition. In the spirit of realizing a sustainable economy and energy system for all, we can collaborate and compare notes and come up with innovative programs and solutions featuring a lot more distributed clean energy here in Glendale that is currently proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Any more callers?
Joan Hardy, you have five minutes. Joan, go ahead.
Thank you. It's actually Joan Hardy. And I live in the Pellicone neighborhood. Thanks, hello, City Council, thank you for everything you do. I have two things. I really want to emphasize how much I agree with Elise that just called in about us really improving and cleaning up the way we deliver energy in our city and doing all we can to get away from fossil fuels. And I know my neighbors, in my neighborhood, all feel the same way. This is an important issue and we've just got to get away from fossil fuels. Two, I was just so encouraged about your discussion and the motion regarding campaign finance and the idea of assisting people that run for office. I think this is a really wonderful idea. I think it, it'll level the playing field. I think it is, incorporates diversity, inclusion and all these concepts that I, I think will bring some fresh faces. Not that you guys are not doing a great job, but of course, we, we want people to run for public office and be more engaged and I, I think that campaign finance concepts such as this are, are really important. And thank you for, for discussing this and bringing about a new idea. I think new ideas are what it's all about and I'm excited that you guys are, are possibly going to do this. So thank you for everything you do. Good night.
Good night. Good night, Joan.
Madam Mayor, at this time I have no more calls.
Okay, and what's next, please?
Any new business?
No.
And adjournment?
Don't forget, okay, I just want to mention, don't forget the health fair tomorrow night, six to nine in front of the Galleria. See you all there. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjournment. Is there a second?
Second, second, we are adjourned at 8:57. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
You go first.